Okay. Good evening. I'm good. My name is Steve Rotolakis and I'm the acting chair of the Shrewsbury Planning Board. I'm going to call to order the May 2nd meeting. And first, I would just announce that there was a glitch in the advertisement relative to the cemetery expansion. It only got run once. It has to get run twice. So it's going to get re-advertised. And unfortunately, or fortunately, we can't open up the public hearing tonight. But that public hearing will be Thursday, June 6th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. So anybody here for that expecting that was going to be an agenda item, it will not. Next, I would just ask that we take a look at our minutes of March 20th, 2024. Is Mo back on? Okay.
Yes.
Any comments? Dina?
No comments.
Any comments, Matt?
No comments, no.
Julie, any comments?
Good.
Mr. DePaolo, any comments?
No.
Okay. And I entertain a motion to approve the March 20th, 2024 minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Matt, you all set with them?
Yep, all set.
Okay. Dina?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm all set with them as well. So the motion carries. Now, with respect to the April 4th, 2024 minutes, any comments from any board members relative to those minutes?
No comments.
No comments? Then I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Matt, you in favor?
Yes, in favor.
Dina?
Yes.
Julie, in favor of approval?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Okay. I am as well. So those minutes are approved. Any board member comments this month? Matt?
None, nope.
Dina? Julie?
Not today.
Mo?
All set, thank you.
I have none as well. Staff report?
So I have one brief staff report. I understand today is a big day for one of our board members, so I just wanted to say happy birthday to Mr. DePaolo.
Hey. [laughing].
Thank you for not saying which birthday it is.
Happy birthday, Mo. Next, we have an agenda item with Chair of the Select Board, Beth Cassavant. Does Cassavant want to come up?
Thank you.
And this is relative to the status and recommendation of Article 44 for the March 20th, 24 annual town meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to let me meet with you briefly this evening. I know that you have a packed agenda. I just want to let you all know that I called a select board meeting that was held earlier this evening so that every member of the select board had an opportunity to openly discuss Article 44 and deliberate as a board. We knew that the timing was important specifically because your board is holding a public hearing on all of the articles this evening, including Article 44, which is the MBTA Community Zoning article. So it's important that we, as the executive body, provide our clear position to the planning board on this critical piece of zoning. The town intentionally solicited community feedback before deciding whether to submit the proposed zoning overlay plan to the state for pre-adoption review. While we have every reason to believe that the proposed plan meets Section 3A requirements, not having feedback from the state leads some people to believe that we are voting on something that may not be compliant. This is a distraction, and it doesn't serve town meeting well. It's important to recognize that planning staff worked with our consultant from Central Mass Regional Planning to run our acreage, density, and associated land use through the state's pre-compliance model, submitted for approval for the ability to include a mixed-use requirement in the zoning, and completed an economic development analysis to get approval to allow up to 20% of any units constructed under the proposed zoning to be affordable. Not every community has chosen to go through the pre-adoption process, and even if the entire zoning bylaw is submitted for pre-adoption review from the state and deemed acceptable, it's not a guarantee that if it's approved by town meeting, the zoning will be deemed compliant upon final review. As the executive body for the town, we put trust in our town staff to put us in the best position possible on important matters such as this. And while the select board has no doubt that town staff and the consultant have developed bylaws that reflect community feedback and will be found largely in compliance, not taking advantage of the pre-adoption process to gain feedback from the state is distracting, and it's allowed some skepticism and misinformation to crowd out facts and data. So the select board still firmly believes that compliance is the right path for Shrewsbury, but we are willing to wait until the fall special town meeting so that we can go through the pre-adoption process and know for sure if we are approved for the mixed-use requirement and maximum affordability. So by waiting, we would further ensure that all interested parties, the select board, the planning board, the finance committee, and most importantly, our town meeting members and our residents, that they represent, have the best information possible to make this decision in the fall. So the board voted unanimously to not recommend adoption of Article 44, the MBTA Community Zoning Act, compliance at the May 20th, 2024 town meeting. For this zoning to be considered by the fall town meeting, the special town meeting, the planning board would need to provide a favorable recommendation this evening for Article 44. And that would allow us to bring back the article for reconsideration at the special fall town meeting. So I know that it's a bit of a wrinkle, but I did speak with your Chair, Mo DePaolo, and I do believe he filled in the acting chair as to why the favorable recommendation this evening is needed. So I am happy to discuss this further or answer any questions that you might have.
I guess I'd open it up to the board. Matt, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time, no.
How about Dina?
Nope.
Julie, Mo, any questions?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
And I just, just as the acting chair, I agree with Ms. Cassavant's position. I do believe it's a distraction. This board routinely approves zoning articles, some of which are more complex than the MBTA zoning article. And typically, I think I stated at the last hearing that they're routinely approved by the AG. Sometimes we get hung up on an advertisement, or I think the last one of any substantive concern was involved battery storage, and they thought it was a hindrance of the provisions of the general laws relative to the encouragement of solar development. But it just involved the excise of one or two sentences from a fairly large bylaw. So again, I think it's a distraction, but fortunately, we have time and we can take this up in the fall at town meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Are we able to ask questions?
It wasn't a public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you. But you can ask questions. It is an agenda item later in the evening, so you'll have an opportunity to ask questions then.
It was specific to something she said, that's why I asked.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Just remember it and...
I have it written down.
Okay, thanks. At this point, I'm going to turn over the next two hearings. Anybody here for the Route 20 nominee trust self-storage facility? That item's going to be withdrawn, but I'll let Ms. Olson handle that. But I'm going to turn over the next three hearings, I guess, to Ms. Olson. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so the first item on the agenda this evening is the proposed parking relocation request for a de minimis change from North Bridge Partners, 384 South Street. We have anyone here from 384 South Street? Hi there.
Good evening.
How are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Good, thank you. Please state your name.
Devin Howlett from Beals Associates here, representing the owner and applicant, North Bridge Partners. So we've made a de minimis change request to the site plan. Really, the request is, on our site plan, it's the northern building, formerly known as Building A, now 384 South Street. We're proposing or asking to relocate the 73 permeable parking spaces from that northern side to adjacent to the rain garden. Mainly, it's due to cost right now. It's about two to three times the cost of pavement. They would like to construct those spaces now for a potential tenant. And if those additional spaces are needed in the future, the spaces adjacent to the rain garden, we would construct them at that time. I have copies of the plans as well as the letter, if the board would like it. Otherwise, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Going to open it up to the board. Any questions, comments from the board?
No question.
No questions, no.
Mo, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Just for clarification, are we being asked to allow those 73 spaces to be designated reserved parking and not be built right now?
Correct. So we've built all the required zoning parking spaces. The ones that haven't been constructed at this time are reserved. So that's the intention for those permeable parking spaces to remain as reserve adjacent to that rain garden.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
I'm going to open it up to members of the public. Any questions, comments on this particular item this evening? Just please go up to the podium, give us your name.
Hi, I'm Caroline Maycomber. I'm from Precinct 9. I live on Walnut Street. So it sounds like this is right up the street from me where that Allen Homestead was, where that new big Centec monstrosity is located. I apologize. So you're looking to add more parking spaces? You're relocating them to the other side of the road?
So, just to be clear, so the parking that is required and is provided by the plan has already been constructed. The request for this evening is to change reserved parking spaces that were impervious, build a portion of them as pervious spaces, and the impervious then as reserved parking, which has already been approved, will become additional spaces in that location will become impervious.
Okay. Can you explain, just because I'm sure there's other people in the room like myself that don't know what you mean by impervious versus pervious parking spaces?
Yeah, so impervious parking spaces allow for rainwater to infiltrate into the ground where pervious, or sorry, the other way around. Pervious allows for rainwater to infiltrate into the ground where impervious does not.
Okay. So we're looking to add more rainwater to the drainage on South Street?
If you'd like me to answer. So we're not proposing to add any additional parking spaces. The total parking count across the facility remains the same. Today, we could go and construct those parking spaces. Really, it's just the type of texture you'd see on the ground. With regards to stormwater, we actually designed the facility for even those permeable spaces to be considered impervious. If the board remembers during the permit process, I believe, if I remember correctly, it was the Conservation Commission that asked the emergency access road to be grass, as well as, they wanted us to look at introducing some permeable pavers. Everything was originally all pavement, none of these permeable pavers. We made the switch. The stormwater remained the same. So we've actually overdesigned that aspect, so we're not, there's no change. The stormwater is really what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public this evening? Okay, thank you very much.
So I think we would have to either take a motion to approve or disapprove of the de minimis change request.
Okay, so can I get a motion from the board?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor. Matt?
Yep, aye.
Dina?
Yes.
And Julie, yes. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Chris, will we get a letter stating...
Yeah, we'll issue that.
Okay.
Probably tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, the proposed self-storage facility site plan modification, Route 20 nominee trust. I believe that is, we don't have anyone here this evening from there.
So we received an email late this evening, so I apologize, I was unable to forward it to the board in time, but the applicant has requested a withdrawal without prejudice for the project as proposed.
Okay.
So we would need to take a vote to approve a request to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, can I get a motion to remove this without prejudice?
Approve the request to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Dina?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Julie, yes. Great, thank you. Tripped over my words there for a moment. All right, next up, proposed warehouse facility site plan approval and special permit, 160 Holden Street LLC, the continued public hearing for 142 Clinton Street. Chris, do you want to set the table for this?
Yeah, so this project has been ongoing. I know the topic this evening is looking at stormwater management and aquifer protection. The applicants have prepared a presentation for the board and for the public. We've gone through a number of the higher-level topic items. We've seen a number of the peer-reviewed reports, many of which are, you know, close to concluding. Some of them do have some remaining items for cleanup moving forward. We'll be working with the board to identify if there's specific topic areas for upcoming meetings, or if we move into a more general phase of fact-finding. We do, so just for the public's knowledge, in terms of process, we wanted to talk about how that works. So the public hearing will continue until the board has collected sufficient information to render a decision, at which point they would close the public hearing. That would have that there's no additional public comment on the project, no additional information received by the board. They can ask clarifying questions of the applicant, but they move into the deliberation phase, really looking at the record as established, and they'll render a decision based upon that information. So as we move into that more general phase, I would just request that the board and the residents, you know, focus on if there's additional information that needs to be collected for the board to render a decision specifically tied to the criteria, the 12 special permit criteria and site plan approval criteria as established within the zoning bylaw and the special permit rules and regulations, so.
Great, thank you. Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Mark Donahue from Fletcher Tilton, on behalf of the applicant, 160 Holden Street LLC. With me this evening for the presentation is Doug Hartnett of High Point Engineer, the civil engineers and design, and Mr. Steve Goodman of GFI Partners is also here to answer any particular questions. To amplify, or perhaps I can just set the table as to where we've been since we were last before you. We have submitted our response to peer-review comments back on April 15th and submitted revised plans and reports through, obviously, the planning department in Graves Engineering. I know Mr. Walsh is here also this evening. We did meet again. You know that we are running a parallel permitting period with the Conservation Commission. We met with the Conservation Commission on April 15th. We received pretty clear indication that plan modification to honor the recently enacted buffer zone from wetlands under your local wetland bylaw, the commission would prefer to see strict interpretation and compliance with that. That's going to require a revision to the plan of slightly shrinking the building, moving some of the other elements that Mr. Hartnett will review with you at a high level this evening. We're in the process of preparing those plans. Once again, they'll have to go to Graves, come back, and do that whole round in that fashion. Where we are on the overall status, I do think, though, is that we have two pieces just before you. We have site plan approval for a use that is permitted as of right, a warehouse and distribution facility is a use permitted as of right. You have authority under site plan review to either approve the plan with conditions or to disapprove it if you determine that we have not submitted adequate information. We believe that we have submitted the adequate information asked for by this board and by your consultants that meets the 12 criteria under Section 7. But if there are open items in any board member's mind or issues that the consultants have, then we should know about those, and we will provide that at a further meeting. As was indicated, the focus this evening is on the special permit that we're seeking. The special permit is not related to the use per se, but the fact that the land is contained within the aquifer protection overlay district in the town. And the purpose of that section of your bylaw is to protect the aquifer and recharge areas serving existing or potential water supplies. Your bylaw establishes a requirement for a special permit if you're creating a certain level of impervious cover, which we are creating here. And your bylaw establishes a fairly consistent four-step analysis to be done by the board for criteria. And that criteria is that it will promote the purposes of the aquifer, in other words, protect the aquifer, that it's appropriate to the natural topography soils or other characteristics of the site, which we believe, particularly given the historic use of the site, is met here, will not have an adverse environmental impact on the aquifer recharge area, and will not adversely affect the existing public water supply. And the bylaw is clear to give you direction that in evaluating that, you should be looking at the simplicity, reliability, and feasibility of the steps suggested by the applicant to protect the aquifer. Those four points are what we're going to focus on this evening, is to demonstrate how this development not just protects, or doesn't render any worse, the aquifer, but greatly improves the aquifer over the existing conditions. I would cite to you from your report from Mr. Walsh of Graves Engineering that, just to summarize and show how we do that, the hydrology computations show net reductions in surface water discharge, hence increases to groundwater recharge of 28% and 20% for the two-year and 100-year storm events respectfully. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to Mr. Hartnett to review with you with some detail how we're improving and preserving and protecting the aquifer zone, which is the criteria for the special permit that you have before you. And as always, we're glad to answer any questions during the course of that presentation. With your permission, Doug?
Thank you, Mark. Chris, could you drop us down? I think Mr. Donahue, or Attorney Donahue, has touched on a lot of the front-end items. That was the status. This is the development plan for the point of reference for the board. You've seen this multiple hearings. We can go to the next slide. To really embellish the remarks from Attorney Donahue on the reduced scope plan, as he had said, the Conservation Commission at their hearing on April 15th suggested that the applicant reconsider the location of retaining walls, which are considered structures under their wetland protection bylaw, and seek opportunities to move those walls outside their 30-foot no structure buffer. So the applicant's undertaken that, and what I've highlighted and read are the areas on the site plan that are affected by that. And by virtue of achieving those goals, as suggested by the Conservation Commission, we've actually reduced the building's square footage by approximately 30,000 square feet, reducing it from 921 to approximately 890,000 gross square feet, with an overall reduction in impervious cover of about 60,000 square feet. Those numbers are still to be finalized. These are conceptual in nature, but we felt it was appropriate to give the planning board understanding on the direction of the project's going and on a future design submission, and our expectation that it would be a rather easy review from Graves Engineering's perspective. I should note, too, that the applicant has made commitments to not alter the mitigation methods in terms of stormwater management or aquifer protection as a function of this reduced development plan, and that all capacities will remain as they were, as if the plan was being designed and approved and built under the current application. Next slide, please, Chris. As Attorney Donahue had said, there's 12 items to be considered by the planning board under the site plan review regulations. I don't think I need to restate those at this point.
No, we can go right by them.
And so we'll pass by those, and we'll go to the aquifer protection district regulations. And to restate Attorney Donahue's points about the special permit. So this project requires a special permit because for a non-residential project that results in impervious surface area greater than 15% of lot coverage, a special permit is required by the planning board. This project results in approximately 39.3% impervious surface area, which will be reduced under the proposed reduced development plan. Next slide, please, Attorney Donahue's gone through the standards for review. This is really the meat of the, I'm sorry if the text is a little small, we're trying to cover a lot of ground here on this plan, but this slide is intended to demonstrate to the board the project's merits as it relates to aquifer protection and improvements to the groundwater supply and protection of the public water supply wells. So the summary of the project benefits and mitigation. First bullet point, eliminate the current soil and fill processing operations on 100 acres of land within this district, and also a design that seeks to balance the cut and fill on the property so we're not exporting a lot of the fill material that's on the site, that material to be processed and reused where possible. On the second bullet point, convert to a traditional commercial use, using with stormwater management design compliance with local and state stormwater regulations for a critical area. You may recall in prior testimony that we've given at the public hearings, because of the fact that this property is within a Zone 2 area of contribution to a public water supply, it's labeled as a critical area and requires a higher level of pretreatment prior to either surface discharge or to groundwater recharge. The required pretreatment is for one inch of rainfall. So what does that mean? You are required to pretreat up to one inch of rainfall, which is equivalent to what we call a water quality volume. So if you have an inch of rainfall that drops on the surface of the ground or drops on the pavement, that runoff flows toward drainage collection system, to a catch basin, through a pipe network. In this particular design, we have other sediment, we have sediment for bays. We also have what we call isolator rows for total suspended solid mitigation as well. And by virtue of all those pretreatment devices in what we call a treatment train, the drop of water hits the pavement, it goes into a catch basin or other drainage collection device, and is routed to these different best management practices to basically polish the water to get it to a level that is clean enough to be able to recharge to the aquifer or to discharge the surface waters or wetlands. That's technically the way the design is intended to work in compliance with state and local regulations. Additionally, for recharge, the state minimum is six tenths of an inch of recharge volume to be provided over all the impervious surfaces for the property. So when you look at, and to be conservative, you look at all the water quality volume requirements for pretreating one inch of rainfall, and you provide six tenths of an inch of recharge volume for the recharge requirement, and you add those up, that equals about 230,000 cubic feet minimum of stormwater storage within the surface ponds or within the subsurface infiltration areas. This project actually exceeds by over a factor of two, providing upwards of 550,000 cubic feet of storage, water quality volume, and subsequently recharge benefit for the project, but more importantly, for the aquifer and for the benefit of the town wells that are adjacent to the property. The other aspect of this project that's encouraged by DEP is decentralizing the recharge system. So what does that mean? Back in the old days when we used to design these, it was easiest to take a detention basin or... it was easiest to take a detention basin or recharge basin or some kind of a stormwater basin and put it in the corner so that you can maximize your development footprint. That was what we did in the 70s and 80s. Nowadays, it's, it's encouraged to provide a decentralized system where you provide recharge in different areas of the site so that you're getting recharge more holistically, covering the entire footprint of the property. In this case, we provide recharge of up to six locations between the surface infiltration basins and the subsurface infiltration basins. And what that allows us to do is better mimic the natural recharge characteristics of the property if it was in a natural state. We provide isolation valves upstream of recharge basins. This was a recommendation of the, of the engineering department for the town. We've seen it recommended in other communities that we've done projects in. And what it is, what we, we provide is a, we call it isolation valve. It's essentially a shut-off valve that allows an individual, in the event, in the unlikely event that there is a, a release or a spill within the parking areas or the loading areas, that through following the protocols within the operation and maintenance plan, the property manager and the tenant will have guidelines and directions to where to shut off the valves before any potential runoff that might have some of the contaminants that was from the release before they get into the, into the infiltration basins. So this is a design element that has been more recently implemented. And we are still working through some of the final logistics of the isolation valves within the subsurface recharge basins and are demonstrated in the plan set that was submitted and also will be finalized in the plan set to be submitted with the reduced scope alternative. We also provide formal Zone 1 wellhead protection easements in consultation with the town and DEP. This has been an ongoing process. This is the area shown in yellow in the lower left-hand side of the, of the, of the image. Of these wells have been installed by the town. One is operational, one is to be made operational in the near future. And the town has been working with the applicant on securing permanent easements to fully protect those wellheads, 400-foot radius of wellhead protection on the properties in coordination, not just with the town, but also with DEP. And then lastly, is the managing of the site operations in compliance with an approved operation and maintenance plan and a spill prevention, control, and countermeasures plan. This is very typical of projects like this where we have high density. Operation and maintenance plans are mandatory through DEP, through their stormwater management guidelines. Spill prevention, control, and countermeasures plans are also highly recommended. And we obviously provide them in all our work as, you know, commercial projects like this where there's concerns from communities. Next slide, please, Chris. This is just, it's not for reading, but just to demonstrate that the spill prevention, control, and countermeasures plans are integrated within the overall operation and maintenance plan for the project. What it does is it provides guidelines for reacting and containing any potential releases, either in landscape areas where there's certain directives to be able to go in, contain, clean up, remove soils, bring those contaminated soils to an off-site facility, and the reporting requirements, either whether it's locally for a, a release of five gallons or less, or reporting to the town and DEP for a release of five gallons or greater. Additionally, it has guidelines for, for managing potential releases on paved areas as well. And so what the board will see is that it provides a listing of the recommended materials so that there's ready response, there's kits that are on the property that are easily accessible so that if a release were to occur, there's protocols and there's physical equipment on site to be able to manage that immediately and respond in a, in a responsible manner. Next slide, please. This is a, an overall master maintenance schedule. So this is a schedule that is, really lives in perpetuity for the property and is, and runs in perpetuity for the operation and maintenance plan. And what it does is it defines on the left-hand column all the various best management practices that are implemented within the operation and maintenance plan. They include sweeping of the property a minimum of three times a year, snow and snowmelt management, as well as no sodium-based deicing compounds. We do not apply salt-based deicing compounds on the property to not negative, so we do not negatively impact the aquifer. There's underground detention and infiltration system maintenance requirements. But also, there's, there's added scrutiny and inspection for significant rainfall events. I think everybody's aware that you see more and more significant rainfall events, more intense. And so in red are these, these are added to provide a separate level of inspectional protection to make sure these large rainfall events do not result in any type of washout into the drainage system that requires immediate, immediate review and response. Deep sub-hooded catch basins, that's pretty typical. Remove debris as two to three times a year. But more importantly, the more you inspect the basins, the more you understand how the loading of the basins occurs. And what I mean by loading is, depending on where the basins are located, the sediment loading may vary depending on the adjacent landscape areas where those basins are located or the amount of sand that might have accumulated in the winter or what have you. So ongoing inspection and maintenance is important to understand how the actual property operates. And you essentially react in real time so that you would even increase the inspection schedule if you felt appropriate, given the loading that you might be seeing on the property. We have water quality units, which provide pre-treatment and inspection of those units as well. The separator rows within the subsurface infiltration basins, inspection of those units twice a year. And again, special inspections after over two and a half inches of rain to ensure that those have not been overloaded due to flash storms. The detention infiltration basins and sediment for bays are inspected quarterly, again, to look for, look for evidence of any potential sediment accumulation in those basins and to clean that up in a, in appropriate, responsible manner. And then lastly, the landscape areas. Keeping an eye on the landscape areas. And part of the, one of the other aspects of this that you'd see in the next slide is the applicant, through discussions with the planning board and the Conservation Commission, has made a commitment to use non-phosphorus fertilizers, non-phosphorus-containing fertilizers. This is not just for groundwater implications, but more importantly, for phosphorus loading concerns within the Newton Pond watershed. And we'll talk about that in a minute. One of the other items raised by the planning board was a snow storage plan. They've developed a more comprehensive snow storage plan. That has been added as a separate document to live with the operation and maintenance plan. And the areas in blue, it may be tough to see on this image, but we have provided snow storage areas around the perimeter of buildings and the loading and parking areas throughout. And the snow storage areas are designed in a manner so that when you have snowmelt, you want the snowmelt to discharge to the drainage system to get the pretreatment of the snow as it melts before it gets into the recharge systems or to the surface discharge areas. So all these, all these snow, storage areas are located strategically to achieve that. Next slide, please. The board has seen this slide as well. We've discussed phosphorus loading, everything at length. Just to paraphrase, the, the document entitled "Total Maximum Daily Loads of Phosphorus for Selected Northern Blackstone Lakes." This is the lower left-hand side of the slide. What I've done is I've essentially screenshotted and placed into the slide the actual table within that report that makes the recommendations for the target total phosphorus loading for commercial industrial uses within the Newton Pond watershed, which is 23 kilograms per year. The current loading is 33 kilograms per year based upon their estimation. So they've, their recommendations have reduced it by close to a third. And what does our project do to achieve that and to make it even better? The loading without mitigation was estimated to be 38.2 kilograms per year. But through the implementation and the routing of stormwater runoff into the different best management practices, in this case, it would be primarily the rain gardens that we have around the building entries and the patio areas and the infiltration basins, both surface and subsurface, we get a significant phosphorus reduction because of the amount of volume that we are infiltrating into the ground. And so what that results in is a reduction in total phosphorus down to 6.4 kilograms per year. So the target is 23, the report, and the actual, per the design, is 6.4. So in conclusion, the project loading discharges 72% lower phosphorus than what the recommended targets are. And we feel this is a significant benefit, not just to the bordering wetlands, but also to Newton Pond, which we understand is stressed and is a concern for the, not just the local neighborhoods, but the, the town at large. Next slide, please. And I think that's it, the discussion.
If I can just touch on a couple of different points. Some of the analysis that's here and some of the work comes from essentially experience. GFI and High Point, working as a partner, have specific experience working in other communities in aquifer protection districts. I submitted a copy of, to a, of a letter to the board from the Town of Franklin. Town meeting members might remember, you saw that back in 2020 when we were talking about the original rezoning. There, GFI built a 300,000-square-foot building on a water protection resource district land. And at the, at the corner of that land was the town well also. To read from that letter of recommendation, working with multiple departments and with the cooperation of the town, GFI successfully developed a solution that will generate significant new tax revenue, create new permanent jobs, and also will protect the town's well, well infrastructure in perpetuity. It has been a pleasure working with GFI Partners on the project. In addition to that project, GFI and High Point, Mr. Hartnett, have recently worked on a project approving in that town and moving forward toward construction of a 615,000-square-foot building, also on an aquifer, also on a former sand and gravel operation. That has been fully permitted and moving forward, so they have that experience. And then finally, GFI, most recently, successfully completed entitlement in the Town of Lancaster, also within an aquifer protection district of three separate industrial buildings, totally more than 615,000, 615,000 square feet. So you have the benefit of a team that's done this before elsewhere, knows what best practices are, can develop those practices in a fashion that they meet your bylaw, that they are simple, they are reliable, and they are feasible to be done. And so the benefit of the site focusing on the issue of aquifer protection, which is the special permit before you, is to go from a site that is wholly uncontrolled as to surface water, which is the existing soil and fill processing operation, to one that reduces surface water discharge and treats all stormwater discharge and creates recharge in a holistic fashion. It does that by exceeding the state requirements by a factor of more than two, and it does it in a process that also greatly improves the water quality of Newton Pond. We believe that we've met the standards required for a special permit but welcome the opportunity to discuss it with the board. Thank you.
All right. This time, I'd like to open it up to members of the board. Any questions or comments this evening?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The isolation valves, in case of God-forgiven accidental spill, happen in the middle of the night. How will we proceed with that?
Well, the building would be monitored 24/7. Terms of, it would be the tenant's responsibility to report that. The, the owner will be providing the operation and maintenance requirements in their lease documents with the tenant. And the tenant would be obligated to contact the property owner if the, if the manager's not on site. And then they would together execute the plan that's written in the operation and maintenance plan.
And I would think the water department would be in the loop if anything happens.
I'm sorry.
I would think that the water department, Shrewsbury Water Department would be on, in, in, in the know.
It would be the fire department, Mr. Laddie. It would, it would, yeah, the first response is the fire department.
And the, the pre-treatment train for the stormwater, are there going to be some type of, I say, turbidity measurements or sediment total solid measurements at the end to see if it's doing its job?
There's not typically a, we call it, we call it grab sampling of discharges. The presumption is that in the design criteria provided by DEP, these best management practices have been proven over time and through studies to provide the required total suspended solid removal rates, assuming there's good maintenance. The maintenance is the key. And so that's why it's imperative that the operation and maintenance plans be, except, let's say, accepted to be integrated and be the responsibility of not just the property owner, but the tenant going forward. And through the inspection of the different best management practices, the inspector can make a determination if there's something that's not operating correctly through the inspection process.
Thank you.
Mr. Gasner, do you have any questions?
What I was going to ask was asked and answered, so I'm good.
Okay. Mr. DiPaolo, do you have any questions this evening?
Not at this time.
Okay. I, I did have one question. Understanding that it's decentralized infiltration, right? And you have a number of different processes by which this groundwater is, is, is being discharged. And I appreciate the idea that when it's getting back into the, the aquifer, it's at a, what did we say, a, a, like a level, a certain level that it needs to be cleaned to? Is that, say, just hypothetically, you have all these various processes in place. If one of those processes, say the vortex unit, is clogged and is not operational or something, and that process is essentially kind of taken offline, but all of these other processes are in place and working, are we still able to say with some certainty that we're still going to be able to reach that, that level of cleanliness or do you?
I, I, I understand if, in the event, if I, if I can paraphrase what you're saying, I think what you're asking is, what happens if I, one of these devices needs to be replaced or maintained and brought offline in order to do that?
Correct.
And will we still get the same treatment? And I think what my answer will be is that, yes, it will because of the response time to get it taken care of. Usually, you will see these, because of the inspection frequency, we're talking about quarterly on a lot of these. So you talk about every 90 days. You'll see in those inspections if there's significant sediment loadings that could have a detrimental impact to the BMPs in terms of their sizing. And then you can make a determination about any kind of mitigative measures to be able to implement that immediately upon that inspection. That's what the inspections are for. Would it be, I think in, in the total of what you're providing for the best management practice and the, the pre-treatment prior to recharge, that there would be a de minimis potential for any kind of untreated or untreated runoff getting into the recharge system? Because you have, in most instances, you have two elements on the treatment train. You have catch basins, that's the first defense. Catch basin has a sump. And the sump has enough capacity for initial sediment deposition, and those are inspected quarterly. They also have oil gas hoods on them. So, because we know petroleum products are, are less dense than water, so they rise to the top. The reason we put the hoods on the catch basins is so that the oil's increases do not exit the catch basins. That's your first line of defense. Then you get downstream and you might have a sediment for bay, or you might have a isolator row. And that's your second level of defense. So having multiple pieces of the best management practices in place really provides you an opportunity to ensure that we do not have the situation that you've, that you have some concerns about. It's not that one would go and then all of a sudden you have not, you have. It's not that one would go and then all of a sudden you have, you have backup because the treatment plane, train has multiple devices within the train.
Okay. And how often are these O and M plans or even like best management practices revisited to make sure, I mean, those best management practices are being drafted based upon our current environment, right? So let's say, you know, we continue to get a greater frequency of storms and those numbers change, are those, is there a way of reviewing, or will there be a way of reviewing some of those O and M plans to make sure that we are staying up to date with the changes of our environment to make sure that this facility is still going to be able to, ten years down the road, twenty years down the road, be at the same optimal level of protection for that aquifer?
It's a great question, Ms. Holston, and the benefit of the operation and maintenance plan is there's inspektional documents that you will identify by date and inspection your observations, and it's a chronological timeline. So you're able to see trends much easier through the reporting requirements that are required for the operation and maintenance plans. So if you see, you have more rainfall, as you had suggested, and it creates a little more sediment loading, you will see that in the inspection reports. It drills down to items such as, how much sediment do I have? It's not as, does it have sediment in it? You're measuring and you're evaluating and documenting as you go. And so if you see trends, you're making adjustments on things like more frequent inspection, more frequent cleaning, in order to be able to have the BMPs operate at their optimal, at their optimal level.
Okay, great, thank you.
And these are done by the owner?
Correct. It's the owner's responsibility to manage and operate the operation and maintenance of the facility.
Who checks on the owner?
The owner is usually, in this case, it's a self policing effort, the owner is. Some communities require or would require the reporting to go to the town, let's say. Can he send me an annual report of how the system's operating? That's not uncommon. What we find is the capacity of town staff to be able to take that information and evaluate it, and if there needs to be an action plan put in place, the owner and the town members that are responsible for that exercise would get together and develop a plan. It's pretty common.
So if the water department folks see some spikes in any of the parameters, they have the right to go and check with the owner?
They would notify the owner, yes.
Yeah.
It would be no different than if they, if they were concerned about a sewer discharge, like the sewer department. I see, like, if you're at a restaurant, you had a lot of grease, right? So they would automatically call the owner if they had a concern about that discharge. It's the same thing for stormwater.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? At this time, what? Oh.
If we want to help out the peer review.
Sure, yes, we did have a peer review done on this. Jeff, yeah, here you are. I don't know if you want to give some insight from the town's peer review on this?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the record, my name is Jeff Walsh, I'm with Graves Engineering, peer reviewer for the Shrewsbury Planning Board. Excuse me. I'm going to speak broadly at first. I know we're focusing tonight on stormwater management and the aquifer protection overlay, but nevertheless, on special permit. But broadly speaking, our firm was engaged to review the site plans, the thick boring stormwater management manual, and so on and so forth, for compliance with engineering issues in the zoning bylaw, information, requirements in the special permit regulations, both administered by the planning board. We reviewed the stormwater management for compliance with the Mass DEP Stormwater Standards and Handbook, and we looked at general engineering practices throughout. And with respect to site plan review, that isn't the focus on tonight, we look at vehicle circulation, pedestrian circulation, grading, and on and on, all the boring stuff that's, that us engineers need to work on. But I'm here to, I'd like to focus now on the stormwater management aspect, if I could. With respect to the local regulations, this community, like many other communities, and we do, by the way, work for a lot of different communities, I see a lot of different regulations. Towns have in place regulations to protect the aquifers for their public water supply wells, and Shrewsbury's no different. It speaks to, one of the things is typically the amount of impervious cover and protection of the aquifer, not depleting the aquifer. And I look at this as two very distinct and different aspects that I look at during my review. One is quantity of water, paving paradise, if you will. And the more impervious there is, the less recharge you get. So with respect to compliance with the local regulations, I look at the surface water hydrology modeling that was done, and I look at the pre-development conditions with respect to volume when it comes to a situation like this, aquifer protection. Peak rates of runoff that we talk about with surface water, we'll save that for later, and I look at the volume of runoff. And I looked at pre-development runoff volumes and post-development runoff volumes, and there is certainly a reduction in runoff volume under the post-development conditions. So knowing this was not a forested area, knowing this was not a meadow, they were generating more surface water runoff than a forest or a meadow would, but nevertheless, I'd have to go back decades to try to look at when this, this area was forested, so I had to rely on the existing conditions. To that point, again, a reduction in runoff volumes. Now, with respect to, the other thing I look at is quantity, quality of the runoff and the treatment of the runoff, the things that Mr. Hartnett discussed earlier this evening, he basically walked through what I had to review. And to that point, there, most towns do not have specific quality, runoff quality, or recharge quality requirements, so I rely on Mass DEP Stormwater Handbook. This is considered what's called a critical area because of the zone two, and I believe because of the Newton Pond being a nitrogen, phosphorus, phosphorus, has a phosphorus total maximum daily load on it. But nevertheless, I look at quality of the runoff as a whole, went through the different treatment aspects, and they meet the requirements of Mass DEP with respect to quality and treatment of the water as well. So on both of those points, I don't see any flaws, and, but I'd be glad to answer any questions the board may have. And on another night, if we, if we have to get into some of the other site plan issues, I can talk a little bit of the surface water runoff and the wetland up near Clinton Street and how the plans have evolved, they have an overflow to it, and so on and so forth, but that's a whole different matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any questions for Jeff?
No, no question.
Mo, do you have any questions for Jeff?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to open it up to members of the public for questions this evening. As you'll know, we do have a podium and microphone over here. If I ask that you please use a podium, please direct all questions through the chair so that we can try to keep this as, as best and efficient as possible. I'd also ask that we try to focus our questions, comments on the special permit that we are discussing this night, tonight, related to the aquifer. And, you know, obviously, we have a lot of people here this evening. I'd like to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to voice, ask their questions, voice their comments. Please try to not be repetitive and just be respectful of your, of all of the residents here in terms of keeping your time, so. That, I'll open it up. Yes, sir. As you come up, please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Bob Ryan, A Colonial Drive. I know we're not talking about Article thirty-two yet. I'm the co-petitioner, just for point of reference. Through the chair, I heard this is relevant to what was discussed by Mr. Donahue, but I'll direct you to the chair. I'm wondering if anybody in the planning board can tell me if they understand the concept of as-of-right zoning, or do you need me to explain it to you?
Sir, is this, what is the question related?
So, Mr. Donahue Chair said that the zoning issue regarding this is as-of-right, and I maintain, talking to many development attorneys, it is not an as-of-right zoning because the special permit is required. And under state law, as-of-right does not exist if a permit is required. And that's the point I wanted to make, and I wanted to know if the planning board understood that.
So, so staff and I'm sure the planning board is aware of the requirements as stated. So there's a special permit for the aquifer protection overlay zone. The underlying use in site plan is by right. So by right, typically, depending upon the project specifics, triggers site plan review.
But you understand state law, as-of-right does not exist if a special permit is required for the development. Now, we don't have to discuss it here, I have a legal team ready to go, so it's up to you guys. I'm just trying to bring out a point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak this evening?
Hi, Greg Richards, sixteen Hickory Drive. I have a question about the, you talked about the O and M requirements. I know you mentioned that it is in the lease. Is that lease language provided to the town as far as to ensure that the, that maintenance? Because there's a lot of things you talked about with the valves, how things had to operate, and that was going to be in the lease language with the tenant? So is that reviewed by the town to ensure that it's in there?
The specific lease language typically provided to the town, we do work with permitting to make sure that that operation maintenance plan is in place, but we typically don't collect that on record. If the board felt that that was necessary, again, it's not normal practice, but if the board felt it was necessary, we certainly could require a condition that that be provided as documentation to the town staff for on file.
If I could through you, Madam Chair, we would expect a condition of approval that the site would comply with the operation and maintenance plan as presented. That puts the onus on the, on the owner. The owner will often require the tenant as the one on site to do the work, but the failure of the tenant does not absolve the owner. The owner's responsible for compliance with the permit and runs revocation of a special permit for violation of it. By putting it in the lease, it adds basically the teeth to it, that the failure of the tenant to do it constitutes an event of default under the lease, and that has a lot of consequences to a tenant that they want to avoid. But I want to be clear, the owner of the land is the one that's primarily accountable to the town for compliance with the conditions.
Correct. Thank you.
And then, just a follow-up question, then. Is there any audit that's done or required by, you say, the owner, because you don't know who the tenant is today, and, you know, I, how do you ensure, I guess, is there an audit requirement that the, that maintenance plan is being followed? Because a lot of things, I kind of have the question too about the isolation valves, where if it's a manual process and there is a high likelihood that there was an issue, it could be from a non-employee because of all the truck traffic, right? So if there was a truck incident, that's not an employee who's even familiar with that operating manual, so how do you ensure compliance and is it audited? Meaning, does that, is the owner requiring, or is there anything around that to ensure that they're following what they're supposed to? Because I know it's great that they have it, but most people don't follow training plans, they don't do training, so I just want to understand how that works a little bit better.
Through you, Madam Chair. I would disagree with the gentleman's, with all due respect, comment that it would just be ignored. This is a critical component of the maintenance and operation of multimillion dollar facility, and it is as important as HVAC or any other component of the site for its integrity and its value to its investors and to its lenders. As indicated by Mr. Hartnett, different towns do different things. We're open for a discussion as to what Shrewsbury would like. As Mr. Hartnett has indicated, we've been in communities, sometimes together, sometimes in different communities, where we're asked to submit the reports, we do that. Some other communities ask for an annual certification of an owner or even a third party, that they've done the work in some fashion. The, the concept of basically private, privatization of review is frankly more common now in Massachusetts than it used to be. All hazardous, you know, hazardous waste, the environmental issues with regard to that, years ago was privatized by DEP, whereas, you know, it's basically certification by owners and consultants that they've complied in the past. So we're glad to talk about what makes the town comfortable to demonstrate the work's going to get done.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just one final comment. I wasn't suggesting that it was going to be ignored, I wasn't, what I was suggesting. I just know that sometimes things can be missed, but is there, I guess, when, is there like a standard that's followed, you know, because I'm familiar with like ISO nine thousand one, fourteen thousand one, is there a, I'm not familiar with this from a standard standpoint, but is, is there like a certifying standard from that that people typically follow, or say, hey, this, this facility is certified to a certain standard, or, I just don't know, maybe it doesn't exist?
I, I don't know if there's an objective third-party standard, like ISO nine thousand, I mean, either you sweep the parking lot or you don't. I mean, I guess it's, you know, so I'm not, I'm not aware of it.
Yeah, I just didn't know because you, like, it's not, yeah, because if you, you know, I guess it's more about if there was an issue with the stormwater, the aquifer, I didn't know if there was an environmental standard out there, because I don't know the space, that's all.
I might just point out through the chair, the owner is obligated to certify a non-discharge statement as part of the stormwater management guidelines. It's a, it's a non- illicit discharge statement. So the owner really certifies the fact that they will not create any releases and are obligated to be able to manage anything that, with respect to those potential releases or incidents that may occur. That's a standard that's in the report, so when we get into the discussion about, is there a type of certification? As it relates to all the operation and maintenance, DEP does not have a standardized, call it a format, or something like that. But there are some elements that are required on the policy that the owner's obligated to be.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the back.
I live in Forest Hill Drive, which is not near Newton Pond or the aquifer, but all of us in town use the water, drink the water, wash our kids with the water, wash ourselves with the water. If something happened, was to happen, where a discharge got into the aquifer and made the aquifer so that it could no longer be used because it's been contaminated, who is responsible for providing the town with clean potable water? Is it the owner of the land, or is it the town? Because I'm sure it would be a very expensive thing for the town to have to go to MWRA or someone else like that to get water. That's my question.
So water is a town utility, it would be the responsibility of the town, correct?
Right, and they would seek recourse in, in whatever avenue in terms of specifics of whatever discharge happened. I think it's important to note that the existing site and the existing use does not have the protections currently. It is being operated as a sand and gravel site with vehicles on site, with, you know, as a mining operation, has traditionally been utilized in that manner without protections. as a mining operation has traditionally been utilized in that manner without protections. This project is specifically proposing to, as was discussed in the presentation, to implement significant amounts of protections that would, you know, as a course of regular operation, you know, clean the water and clean stormwater and discharge from the site as well as additional infrastructure, which the DPW has requested in terms of specific isolated incidents and addressing those. So, so those currently do not exist on-site, and this project is proposing those. And I think the statistics that were given in terms of phosphorus loading, as well as the DEP standards and how this site fits in relation to that are important in consideration of that topic.
I'm not sure that I got an answer.
The top. So the answer is that the town would seek recourse under specific discharge circumstances if so warranted. So, again, the question is hypothetical of, of some hypothetical discharge operation, and without the specifics of that, I can't speak to how the town would proceed. And again, that would be a discussion that during that incident, that the town would evaluate the best course to respond to.
Okay, one more question. I think the developers have tried to put together a good plan for maintenance and making sure that things happen the way that they should happen. Does the town have the right to inspect those facilities on a normal basis to make sure that everything is going the way that it should be going, that it's been proposed?
I mean, they would have to go through, in order to get their permits, correct? They are, there would have to be some type of an inspection done by the town, but, I mean...
So, so we do have a stormwater coordinator, and DPW is, you know, co-located with the water department. What I'd suggest in terms of those inspections, as, as kind of alluded to, in terms of the operation maintenance plan and how that's handled, we would certainly work with those departments and the applicant to satisfy a program in terms of inspection of those. Again, I would want to work with the stormwater coordinator and our town departments to see what they find adequate in terms of inspection and normal inspection for these types of devices. So, I do anticipate that would be in place. I can't speak to those specifics because those are separate departments, but I'd be happy to get that information for the board.
And I think it would be a good thing to have something written into the maintenance plan that says that the town has the right to inspect.
Understood.
That's it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Richard Cantwood, B. I have a question in continuation with the gentleman's topic. So his ask about who would be responsible for an alternative water supply, et cetera, and the response about it's subjective is itself the huge risk that we're talking about. One other que, thing that I noticed is everything that we discussed here has been mostly surrounding reactive measures, OEMs, and all of those things will kick in if something happens or once something happens. But are there any proactive considerations that are happening? Because from what I understand, there is no tenant identified, but there will be certain assumptions based on which this facility is being built, the size, the scale, and everything, right? So, is there any considerations of what type of materials or goods will be allowed to be stored there and what will not be? Which kind of would help alleviate or gain some level of confidence that, you know, it might not be subject to as much contamination? Because all of these assessment results should be based off of certain things, right? The surface water runoff or, how, how can we guarantee anything if something like chemicals or paint or lead materials or anything gets stored? If there were to be any contamination, how are we going to prevent it? It's, it's all reactive and, again, subjective. What's the proactive measures that can be considered?
I, I would tend to say, I mean, the O and M plans are operations plans and maintenance plans. Those are not reactive. Those are, I would almost tend to say proactive because you're, those are in your daily operations. You know, I, I think what we're talking about in terms of shut-off valves, yes, that is a reaction to, but you're taking other steps in that O and M plan to make sure that there's not a need for that shut-off valve, right?
I think, don't you think a more, stronger proactive measure would be to allow or not allow certain types of materials, goods that will be allowed to store, which will also go further along to help prevent these things happening?
So, in regards to the specific tenant selection, I don't want to, you know, have it seem that this is, this is the only permit that is needed, and then the town simply washes its hands from tenant selection. Depending upon the specific tenants that do locate in this building, you know, certainly during fit-out would trigger building permits as well as additional local permits, depending upon those specific tenants. We do have significant health and building regulations in place as well as specific conditions with the aquifer protection overlay zone, which do limit the storage of certain materials on-site. As that tenant selection is chosen, we would work with the applicant through that building permit phase and through our approval process, the local approval process, to evaluate if additional approvals are needed. Again, depending upon that tenant selection, that could simply be a building permit. It could trigger additional planning board review depending upon the specific tenant. And so, at that time, we would handle that review similar to this process.
Yes, in the back.
Hi, Rachel Missel, 23 Cypress Ave. This time I let a few other people speak before me and gave them time to get a word in edgewise. Couple of questions. One, I'm wondering if some of the parking could be pervious or if some of the parking could be like multi, multi-level in order to reduce the amount of impervious cover of the site? I'll let you answer that first and then move on to the other points I have. I don't know if that's something that's been considered.
Through the chair.
Sure.
Because the site is within a Zone 2, which is a public water supply area, the stormwater management regulations do not recommend pervious pavements for the reason that you want to get pre-treatment of the runoff rather than having the runoff go directly into the ground. So, that's not an allowed best management practice. Regarding structured parking, all's I can, how I can respond is that, no, it was not considered. And given the fact that there is sufficient land area to park the parking, as well as all the best management practices we've implemented, it's not necessary to undertake a, such a significant change to the site plan as a result.
So we should be providing an exception so that you can have more impervious surface so that you don't have to build a parking structure? I get that, okay. So, there are a lot of plans that seem to be in place to protect the aquifer overlay with respect to what happens on the site. I am concerned about what happens with vehicles on the way to the site. So if something happens just off the site, what protections do we have for the water? So if there were, say, a truck that had a major wreck on the way into the site, not specifically on the site, and there were a spill, would there be a way to handle that?
That's something, it's a response that happens if an accident happens, right?
Yeah, so, so generally, that initial response, so the, the existing stormwater as part of, whether it's a MassDOT-controlled road or a local-controlled road, those have infrastructure in place for stormwater management. It would be, again, the purview of the local authority or in MassDOT, the state authority in terms of responding to those as their normal course of action.
Okay, so, just to make a comment about that, it does seem like we are inviting more opportunities for something like that to occur by adding hundreds of trucks per day, possibly 24/7. We still haven't gotten much clarity on that. So, just something to consider in the grand scheme of whether or not to approve this. I think that there was a wave that went through the room when the comment about self-policing occurred. I think there's a great deal of really reasonable concern about that because we know that self-policing is notoriously not very good. We already have been paying the price of that because we have a water treatment plant that's taken care of some of the contaminants that are already in our water. I know that we had some sort of settlement from a previous company that managed to contaminate our drinking water. And to the gentleman's point about who provides water, if there is a spill that makes our water undrinkable, if it's the town, that means that it's us. It's all of us as taxpayers. And so, we need to seriously consider, like, we're, we're bringing this in and we're saying, okay, we're going to get money from this as a town, but are we going to lose money eventually because of an accident? And I'm not trying to say that anybody is nefarious, but accidents happen, and even with best practices, best practices mean that we're acknowledging that there is a high chance of some sort of problem. And I don't know whether that's worth it over our water supply, and I just really want you guys to consider that. I appreciate your time. I'll let other people speak now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening?
Thank you again for the record, Jeff Walsh, Graves Engineering. In listening to the discussions tonight, I'd like to share a couple thoughts I have about two particular matters. One, with respect to the operation and maintenance, there certainly were the, the forms in, in place, and the operator of the stormwater facilities obligated to fill those out as they do the work. I serve on a conservation commission, and we have a local stormwater regulations in effect, and we have, for a number of years now, been requiring annual submittal of those forms to the town. And then if, not that the town has the resources to do anything with them, work with them, but nevertheless, they make their way to Town Hall. Going forward, years, decades, stormwater management is going to be only more so, and it's just like decades ago it was with sanitary wastewater treatment, industrial wastewater treatment, the Rivers Act and so forth. That's going to be the same thing with stormwater management. So I'd encourage the board to consider a decision, a condition in its decision that we require annual submittal to whatever department, board makes sense. At least the information's here. Whether or not the town will have the resources to do with it, I don't know. I live in a small town, we see three or four of them a year, and, and, you know, we don't get a lot of, a lot of development like this, but nevertheless, it's there, it's working, and we get some that are very diligent and submit them on time, and there's others we have to chase after, but at least we get the information. So that condition could be appropriate. And I would recommend certification of those. And the reason I would recommend certification of those is for two purposes. One, someone's putting their signature to a document saying, I did this work, I did this maintenance, this is what we did. And it can, it should address two things, and it should address protection of the aquifer. And it's also going to help the town of Shrewsbury with respect to the Newton Pond total maximum daily load thing, which, my understanding, is certification of O and M helps the town of Shrewsbury and the town of Boylston, because both towns are in the watershed to Newton Pond. Any of those certifications help with the two towns to get phosphorus removal credits with respect to Newton Pond. More importantly, accounting aside, it helps Newton Pond, and, and applying the same thing, it will help the aquifer, protection of both. The other thing I'd like to speak of, and, and I heard some discussion about the potential of hazardous, hazardous materials that go through the site. I don't know the regulations on transporting in a truck, bringing into a building, and so on, so forth. They obviously have to meet those requirements. I was involved with GFI in another community, and similar situation as far as drinking water supply and so forth. And there was a prohibition or a limitation put on, on any operator of the facility that they could not store in trailers parked outside the building certain materials for longer than a certain period of time. So it encouraged the board to either use that wholesale, or if you have to focus on hazardous materials, I think it's easier to go wholesale. Trailers have to be emptied within X amount of time. Something like that, a condition like that could be structured to keep from, to keep the inventory being stored where it's intended, which is inside the building, which is better protected than in a trailer outside the building. So, I'd share those two thoughts with the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might, Madam Chair, it might be worth just noting that the bylaw, the Aqua Protection Overlay District bylaw, identifies prohibited uses. And one of the prohibited uses in a Zone 2 with this property is involved is any use involving the manufacture, generation, storage, or use of hazardous materials, including hazardous waste. So, it can't happen. It's a prohibited, prohibited use. Recall that, as Mr. Walsh pointed out, the, the special permit here is triggered by the creation of the impervious. And so we still fall under all the other requirements of the bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other, yes, sir?
Ed Volter, Westview Ave. Couple of things. First one is, is do we know, is work going on at this site today? Has anybody established whether, or is this still a dormant site?
Yeah, the site is currently active.
It is, okay, okay. I have a couple of process-related questions, and it relates to this project and really any project that comes before the board here. In terms of, you know, how your, you know, service corporation works, I'm kind of new here, so I just want to understand, you know, how, how this place functions. First one is, when, you know, people, people with a certain expertise, you know, as this gentleman appears to be, come before the board, are they, when they submit artifacts, testimony, whatever, are they required to give that under any kind of pains and penalty of perjury? That if they're, you know, whatever they're saying turns out not to be correct, that, that you're going to base your, your decisions largely on the experts over me, I would hope. So I'm just trying to understand, you know, how this gets introduced into the system here, right? And we all rely on it because you rely on it. So, I just don't know how that works.
So, so procedurally, what I'd suggest is that in, in the preparation of these reports, the town requires... town requires that they be completed by licensed professionals. We then have those reports and plans and materials that are submitted by those licensed professionals reviewed. That's the peer review process, the peer reviews, the gentleman who spoke, we have a number of those for each topic area. There are also licensed professionals who review that work for the benefit of the town. And so that's the process in terms of review.
I take that as a no.
So to answer your question, to your, answer your question, no one is, that presents here is asked to take an oath that they are, that everything that they are saying is true. However, we do have a check, as Mr. McGoldrick just outlined, that the people that are presenting to us, as well as the people who are providing us with our peer reviews, are licensed professionals. This is what they do on, that's, they hold a license that allows for them, say, a licensed site professional is an environmental professional. They are, they have a special license that allows for them to specifically read environmental reports and make determinations on those, and their licenses.
Well, because they have an expertise.
Correct.
That probably, maybe all or maybe a few of you don't have, and that you're going to base your opinions on. I'm just trying to understand how the system flows here, so. So I've got my answer, and I appreciate the answer. Secondarily, I noticed this chair is empty. So the acting chair has turned it over to the acting acting chair, and I'm, spawns a question. Does this board, or any board, do the due diligence, and/or are you required to sign any kind of affidavit that neither you or your family members have a beneficial interest in these projects?
Sir, I appreciate the questions, and I think that those are procedural questions. If we're trying to talk about the project that we have in front of us, not necessarily board composition this evening, so I'd like to try to maintain our focus on the permits that we are here to.
You can address that to the planning department. Be happy to answer that.
Isn't that this, or no?
The planning department.
Planning department, okay. I will take that up. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Brian Costello, Walnut Street in Shrewsbury. The, what's the cost of a remediation, average cost of a remediation of a contaminated aquifer in the United States?
That's not a figure I think any of us have off the top of our head this evening.
So have we done any analysis? Have we paid for any service that lets us know what the worst-case scenario, or just a scenario of an accident, would cost? And wouldn't that be important to understanding whether we'd want something like this in our town?
That was not covered as part of the peer review. I don't think that that's something that is, we can, I mean.
No, the EPA has plenty of documents and studies that certainly have been done on contaminated water throughout the country. I was just asking, have we done that work? Has anybody done that work? Because it seems to me that that would be a vital piece of knowledge. If a developer wants to build, perhaps, for instance, we should understand what the cost would be if something happened, and then maybe we should have the developer possibly fund, have a fund, that they have the financial wherewithal to actually pay that legal fee if we have to sue them. Should we have in the agreement that they pay the costs of our attorneys? Should we have that in agreement that they pay for the, they pay for this study that says this is what it would cost if something really goes wrong? Because we always have to think, not best-case scenario, we always have to think, well, it's worst-case scenario. I personally think especially when it comes to water. You know, I think that's a fairly important thing in a town. So that's just, it's a comment, maybe, and a question. I think you answered it, so, thank you.
If I might, Madam Chair, I think we have to come back to reality. The bylaw establishes.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
The bylaw establishes three different zones for aquifer protection. This site is in Zone Two. There is a Zone One in which very few uses are permitted, and that was a determination this town made as to how important that land is, because Zone One is a defined term in water preservation because of its proximity to well sources. Zone Two is essentially further away to make it easier. And what this town decided was within that land, as opposed to prohibiting uses, it said you can build uses, certain uses, but if you're going to increase the impervious area, you're going to come to this board and make sure that you're protecting the groundwater when you do that. That's what this is about. This isn't about hazardous waste, because you can't put hazardous waste in the building. This isn't about that. It's not about sludge or anything else, and it's not about trucks driving on the road in any fashion, because that's no different than everybody here who's going to drive home tonight, and they're going to drive through in aquifer protection, more likely than not. That's what it's about. It's only about that in this fashion. Often in our practice, Mr. Hartman and I hear these concerns, but candidly, it has to be brought to the reality that we're not dealing with a virgin forest or a meadow. We're dealing with a historic, operating, active, uncontrolled, as to surface water, sandstone fill operation that's processing it today and tomorrow. It is simply beyond argument that this development is better than what exists there today as to the aquifer. It is beyond debate. It is beyond debate. And so when we talk about these cataclysmic events, which could be happening at any time, particularly on an uncontrolled site as exists today, we have to bring it back to the reality that the site can only be used for certain purposes, and what we're talking about is a creation of impervious area and doing that in a responsible fashion. Thank you.
Hey, Barney Barnes, 115 Clinton Street. We were told, I believe, at the last meeting that we were going to be given time to talk about traffic at this meeting, but it seems like that hasn't happened. Am I, am I wrong about that?
We weren't.
Was it a different meeting where you said we were going to be able to talk about traffic at the next meeting? You did mention that, right?
If I might, Madam Chair, what, I thought we covered this at the beginning, but let me go back again. Originally, when we left you in April, we thought that this evening would be more of kind of a wrap-up of loose ends for the development. Since then, as we talked about when we began the meeting, the site is changing, the building is changing. So we're not in a position to wrap it up because, A, we haven't prepared the plans yet, B, your consultant hasn't seen them in any fashion. So what we did today instead was to focus more particularly on the issue that is most proximate to the requirements of this board, which deals with aquifer protection. We're not ducking, if that's the term or kind of, or suggestion that's being made, the traffic. We're just going to deal with it at a different time when we really are in a position to try to wrap up whatever loose ends. That gets to the point that my presentation began at the beginning, that if the board or staff have any concerns with regard to the site plan review, we need to know them so we can address those, which was related to the traffic issues.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like at a later planning board meeting, we'll be able to discuss traffic again?
So I guess we'd be more than happy to discuss, we can ask your question about the traffic, I suppose, and, you know, obviously, the traffic engineer for the project proponent is not with us this evening, so I don't want to, you know, not be able to properly answer your question, but if you'd like to ask the question, we can try and work to get the answer for you.
Great. I would love it if we could have, like, a defined time that both the traffic and the sound expert come back, because the last meeting that we had, we talked about sound, there was a, just like this meeting, there was a ton of dense information to try and download in a short period of time on topics that we don't frankly understand. I mean, I'm not speaking for everybody, maybe some of you are experts on this stuff, but I had to go do a lot of research on sound and decibel levels, and I took, I took classes in school for that, and I still had no idea, right? So I had to go do a lot of research. One thing that I am pretty darn good at, what I'm employed for, is computer-aided design software. So I went and I did some research on CADNA-A, which seems like it's a really good software that did all this sound stuff, and I just, I think, all I'm basically asking is that, basically what happened is they did a study, right? They did a simulation where they mapped an area and given certain sound sources coming from certain areas, what that software actually does is it optimizes barriers, right? Which is cool. That's great. Like, it means that less money needs to be spent on barriers that are pretty much useless, right? Like, we don't, we found when we did the simulation that this, putting a 20-foot wall here won't actually help the sound at all, so we won't build the 20-foot wall. I'm cool with that, right? My issue is the fact that Mass EP, as a minimum requirement, says that they put, I forget what they're called, receivers at the closest residence around the facility, right? But we know, and I'm sure that, I'm sure that they're trying to do their due diligence to make sure that they're not putting undue stress on the community at large, so I'm sure they'd have no problem going back in and putting more receivers in that same study that they've already run, right? Almost no cost added as far as time or manpower, just put a few more receivers in at the higher-level houses that surround this, because this area, especially in the neighborhood, portion of the neighborhood that I'm in, is almost like a dome, right? Like, we're at the top of this pretty steep hill, right? And those walls, I think, if we put receivers up higher, we would realize that those barriers actually would be optimized to be taller, right? So I think that that's something that we could ask, right? That could be a condition, is take a look at it again. The secondary thing was, so we can, we can, we don't have to answer that right now, right? The expert's not here. The secondary thing was, if we are worried about sound, right, just to, or my heart rate gets going every time I get up here. A lot of people. The reason that we're talking about, you know, like, hey, it's just a road. Trucks drive down it already, right? Cars drive down already. We're going to drive past it right now, right? The reality of the situation, to bring it back to reality, what we're talking about is volume, right? There's much less of a chance that I'm going to get hit by a car in the middle of the woods, right? There's much less of a chance that there's going to be an accident on a very rural road because there's just less traffic, right? Whereas on Route 20, there's more accidents because there's more volume, right? There's, so we're talking about adding 554 tractor-trailers per weekday. That was their numbers, right? I actually forgot what the exact numbers were, so I wrote down 500. But 500 equals out to, assuming that there's an equal volume throughout the day, one truck every three minutes, and by their numbers in the sound study, that's 100 decibel driving truck every three minutes, about 50 feet from my neighbor right there, every single day, all day long, right? And I just think that we need to take that into account and ask ourselves, is this worth it? Because we're talking about $517,000 net property taxes per year for this facility, when last year, it's projected, I don't know if it's like a real number or not, but off the website, off the Shrewsbury website, it's $102 million in property tax revenue that we made last year. We're talking about less than half of one percentile of property tax value and a room full of people that will be, that will be affected by this. So I think it's something that we should take into account when we're talking about whether or not we're going to give them the special privileges that they need to do their thing, right? If we've already fumbled the ball and given them the right to make this massive facility, and we can't take it back, then we should at least make it as small of an impact on the residents as possible. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening?
Karen Bohinki, 141 Zoro Street, and I'll go back to the water. I have a question about the soil pit testing, and my question is, has it been done? And the reason it's done, my understanding is determine if the infiltration BMPs are suitable at this site. And I think I've read in the peer review that the testing was not able to be completely done because of the ongoing operations at the site. So I'd like to ask if that's the case, if it has not been done. First of all, I guess that's my question. Has it been done?
Through the chair. The testing has been scheduled, will likely begin in the next two weeks, to cover those areas that Mr. Walsh had raised, that we wanted some additional information. The way we did the design, so everybody understands, the design was done based upon testing that we were able to achieve in the areas that weren't subject to the operation, and areas that we did not need to, we get access to because of wetland areas and so forth. And we supplemented that with soil boring information done by a geotechnical engineer. And we took that information to develop groundwater gradient lines throughout the property that allowed us to establish groundwater separation design guidelines. That's what we used. Mr. Walsh was correct in his recommendation to get some additional physical testing in those infiltration basins, and those are scheduled. So we should have that information for the board.
So if it's determined with the additional testing that the soil is not suitable for this design, then what happens?
My opinion, from what we've seen, is that it's not the soil that is the issue. We found that there's sand and gravel underlying the entire development. There's a significant amount of fill above it. What Mr. Walsh was concerned about, not just the verifying that the sands and gravel occur within that area, but that the groundwater assumptions that we had made are appropriate. So, and we'll be able to address that with the board, and if we find that there's an anomaly, we'll obviously consider that and make a redesign in order to be able to count for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Tom Grissow at Four Candlewood Way in Shrewsbury. I don't have a question, but I have a request, and it follows on the gentleman's request for another session at which traffic would be dealt with. And that traffic actually has three different spinoffs to it. One is danger at intersections to people, when you're talking about 554 trucks a day. The other is sound, as was mentioned, and the third is emissions, and public health, and the health of our children and adults, and of course, animals as well. So I just wanted to raise that as a piece of the agenda if you are willing to have another session on traffic and to discuss those questions about those three issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I can, in terms of the traffic safety and some of that, in terms of the volumes, those reports were submitted and peer-reviewed as the applicant has suggested with the redesign, there may be some need to amend those, to make sure that the new facility meets those standards. That will be peer-reviewed as well. We do have our peer review consultant here tonight, but I understand that, you know, the applicant's traffic engineer isn't, but I don't know if the peer review has additional in terms of, additional comment in terms of that. In terms of emissions, what I'd suggest, that is a comment that has been heard numerous times through the, through town staff. We've been evaluating, as a municipality, emissions and air quality as a town-wide issue. We are evaluating a no-cost-the-town grant to locate. We are evaluating a no-cost-the-town grant to locate air quality control sensors. Obviously, it's a grant that was very recently identified through MASTEP, and we're evaluating the best process to pursue that. But what I'd suggest in terms of air quality and emissions, the town has taken, you know, we do note that as a townwide concern, a townwide issue, and we'll be taking steps in the near future to address that. So, again, I don't have an update in terms of the specifics of that, as we just very recently identified that grant, but I hope to be able to speak to that in the near future.
Okay.
Hi, Paula Tebow at 121 Clinton Street, and I'm really pleased to hear about the air quality sensors. I was gonna mention the CBS News about Mass State, who released a bunch of the Purple Air Sensors. They are pretty affordable, so if the grant is not secured, perhaps the developer could consider putting those out. I did just want to touch on the water issue. The EPA does publish a document on protecting groundwater, which I'm sure you're very familiar with, and it does provide a listing of the three types of relative risks of land use activities, lumping them basically into three columns, which are identifying the three types of risks: very low, low, and then moderate to high. And the project before the planning board falls into the moderate to high level risk category, as does the current site. The proposed project also falls under the MEPA review threshold, which is established for projects that are of a nature size or location likely to cause damage to the environment. So, when considering both the moderate to high risk level, in addition to meeting the MEPA thresholds, I, it just seems to me that the project may conflict with at least two of the criteria under the special permit approval in the aquifer bylaws. So I would just request that that be taken into consideration. I would also caution the planning board that Massachusetts is behind the curve of policies in terms of warehousing. So while there's a lot of best practices out there and state law requirements, Massachusetts is lagging, as identified in the Environmental Defense Fund report that I've mentioned. Just as an example, California, just this past October, put forth a bill, Assembly Bill 2840, to provide a buffer zone of 1,000 feet between diesel truck traffics, emissions, which we've been talking about, for any new warehouse facilities due to the emergence of air pollution and associated health risks. So it's real, and Massachusetts is not there yet. I would just encourage my fellow neighbors and the public to make sure to comment on the MEPA review. It closes for a public comment on May 10th. And I did, I think that was it, yeah, because I asked my other question at the beginning. Oh, and I just wanted to know if questions have been submitted to the planning board that haven't been answered. Is there a specific timeline that we get responses for?
So, questions that are submitted are provided to the board. If there's specific questions that have not been answered, we're happy to address those.
I have submitted some back in February and again in March for follow-up and stuff. I got a response, and I would just appreciate one.
Looking to that.
Mike Lepri again, 6 Forest Hill Drive. Just one thing I wanted to bring up here, and that was, until very recently, I hadn't heard anything, anything, from the town or anybody else that said this development was going on, and it was going on on top of our aquifer. Why is, why has that happened? I spoke to a, yesterday I had my driveway redone, and the fellow who did it lives in Shrewsbury, his business is in Shrewsbury, and he had never heard of this. And I'll guarantee you that if you talk to Shrewsbury residents, you go out and take a poll, you're gonna find out that a lot of people had no idea what was going on.
All of this information is posted on the state, on, on the town website, all of the permits, there's a, essentially a holding place for all the documents that have been provided for this particular project that is sitting.
This is a major concern.
It is, it has been publicly advertised, so, I mean, I, I, I can't explain why people may not know about it, but it's certainly, the information is there and available on the town's website for people to review.
Isn't there a petition right now? It's been put around, that I only found out a few weeks ago, because I signed it, that talked about this. And has that petition been factored into what's going on?
I'm not aware of any petition. Sorry.
Well, I think you're missing something.
Yes, I am.
Scott Nolan, 20 Bosworth Road. Is anybody checking the fill? Our bylaws state that fill in an aquifer protection district has to be clean and free of construction debris. And many of the mounds on the site now have concrete and cement in them. Who's checking the fill?
So, in terms of the operation of this specific site, I, I can't speak to that. Through discussions with the applicant, they have discussed that some of the fill on-site, that's not suitable, that will all be removed, in terms of the actual fill that is put in place. The engineering department and DBDW do have staff that does review specific construction as it's ongoing. We have site inspectors that go out and review all of the normal kind of materials and the normal course of action. But, I'd have to speak with them in terms of, if there's a specific fill in the direction that, that happens. The applicant spoke to the soil testing and soil boring that has been conducted on-site, and that is an ongoing process throughout.
Okay. Also, in the aquifer protection district, there is a ban in Zone 2 on storing hazardous waste or materials. Walk through Walmart and check out how many common household goods are hazardous materials. Lowe's, Target, what's going to be stored in these warehouses? We won't know until we have a tenant. The town should pay to have a hydrogeological study done of the aquifer, because you don't know about it. Forty-one years ago, at a meeting similar to this, my wife had dispelled the word aquifer. Nobody knew what it was. In many places in the DEIR report, it says that the stream bed that runs along Clinton Street carries just stormwater from Route 70. That's not true. There's an underground stream on Glendale Ave that flows across Bosworth to a culvert behind our mailboxes. And that water flows into what I believe is the vernal pool across from J&amp;M Market, and then under Route 70 to what I think is another vernal pool on the site. You need to have it studied. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to corroborate the last speaker's knowledge of the drainage in and around that area. The drainage he was referring to not only crosses Glendale, but it goes up into Boylston, and it ends, for those that know the area in Boylston, more or less behind what used to be the Wagner Motors dealerships that moved to Shrewsbury. So, it, it's about 130-acre area that drains down to the, to the area in question, but I just wanted the board to know that I am aware of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, question, do pray, Candlewood Way. My apologies, I did have info on traffic tonight, because I thought that was also coming under discussion, as well as other items, so my apologies for jumping around here. Is there any information from the site visit that was conducted by the Planning Board and Conservation Commission?
Yes, we hadn't discussed that last, at the last meeting, but...
Yeah, so, so we did, so staff and two members of the planning board, two members of the Conservation Commission did attend a site visit to review the existing conditions. I don't believe we've prepared a formalized report. I believe we're gonna have a general discussion in terms of what was viewed. What I can say from the staff end, what we saw was consistent with an active site in terms of the ongoing operations. And what we did is we took a, we started at where the existing warehouse structures are. We proceeded with the applicant's team to the wetlands located at the front of the site, which is the, along Clinton Street, and we viewed the site there. We also went along the site to the rear to view where the wetland replication was proposed, as well as the meadow replication, and viewed the existing conditions. There's an existing berm along the back of that site. We discussed briefly in terms of elevation and some of the site specifics of that, of what, how the elevation from existing conditions was going to come up. In some areas, obviously be reduced, in other areas. I'd be happy to kind of develop a little bit more of a formalized report from my notes, if the board finds that useful, or if the members that attended had additional comments that they wanted to share from that site visit, but...
I can share a couple. The place looks horrible. Looks like a graveyard or construction material. We actually had to get the madam chair out of the muck because she got stuck walking. So, it, it looks terrible.
Thank you. I would love to hear more, whether it's an informal report, personally. Thank you for sharing that, I appreciate it, and for attending, and I'm sure having to put your boots on for the site visit. I'm sure most of the residents, at least I will definitely speak for myself, we definitely do not disagree that something needs to be done there. I'm a short timer in town, though I've had extended family that grew up here, and obviously the, there were issues in the past, I'm sure not currently with the new owners, that did have issues with stormwater or EPA regulations and violations. That's what I've found via Googling, I should say. And we have appreciated that they want to do something with, with this property. That being said, my question regarding water tonight is, I remember they discussed the water line that was going to be put in, and that no longer is going to be put in. Is the town going to be looking to put in that water loop line? And if so, how will that be paid for? If I remember this correctly?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
The water line?
Sure. The water loop line that was not needed, I believe it had to do with hydrant testing, I believe, that it was not needed, that was gonna connect to Route 70, Clinton Street, to Sewell. And is the town going to pursue that? And if so, how will that be funded?
So, I apologize, the engineering would be able to answer that much better than I could.
Yep. Okay.
I'm not gonna try to muddle, muddle through tonight.
Through the chair, I can address this?
Sure. Thank you.
When the applicant was initially discussing the project with the town, and the town had done their water upgrade in Holden and Clinton Street, there was a concern that there may not be adequate pressure and flow at the end of the line that was installed in Clinton Street, up to the Boylston Town Line. So, it had always been assumed that for, to provide redundancy, you would want to have a water loop, and this is the, the item that the abutter was speaking about. We had done subsequent testing of the hydrants where the connection points will be for the two buildings. And we worked with our fire protection engineer to evaluate the existing flows and pressures with respect to how the building's fire protection systems would operate. And it was determined that there is adequate flow and pressure in the street to serve the buildings, and therefore the water loop is not required. So at this point, we don't anticipate either the applicant or the town to have to invest in a water loop in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. I actually had more of a statement tonight. Throughout the public hearing process, I have appreciated the town, Shrewsbury's Planning Board willingness to clarify questions, meet with the public, as well as other public officials. Also of note, appreciate the communication from GFI Partners. I do also want to congratulate GFI Partners on their land purchase in Grafton for a research and development facility. I believe I counted 20 to 25 truck bays in the photo that was included in the article. I firmly believe this is what town meeting was thinking when zoning was changed in 2020 to limited industrial, where the 142 Clinton Street project abuts residents on all sides. This Grafton project does not seem to impose issues for noise, air risks, or water or butters based on Google Maps. However, the 140 Clinton Street project does increase, in my opinion, noise, air pollution, townwide traffic impact, immediate local impact, plus a potential threat to the aquifer, and is not mindful to abutters daily lives, raising families and having backyard barbecues, going for a walk through their neighborhood, hearing the birds chirp in the morning, noon, and night, and even sleeping with the windows open on a beautiful spring, summer, or fall night, just like tonight. As I've stated before, having a different project scaled way back could potentially be a better fit for this area that is surrounded by residential homes, except for one portion on Sewell Street. This property in Grafton and all GFI properties that I've looked online, that were shared with the Shrewsbury public at two different presentations, did not appear to have warehouses abutting residential areas, especially the example of the property located in Devon's, Mass. Plus the 187 bays, this will never be like Life is Good Headquarters in New Hampshire, that we were shared, and were told they had six tracks a day.
I, I appreciate your comments. I'd like to try and keep this focused on the Shrewsbury project and not what the concept plans are for Grafton.
Okay. I'm not planning to reference that any further. That was shared at the community meeting in, on December 19th, 2023. That being said, in reading numerous past town of Shrewsbury documents, including but not limited to Shrewsbury's master plan 2016 and as far back as 2021, there's been a consistent theme for this area of town: to preserve and protect the town's aquifer, natural resources, wetlands, improve recreation in all forms. The having this type of project goes against the master plan and the vision of the residents and town based upon the years of the master plan. While times do change, community, communities hopefully improve, prosper, and grow. I ask for people watching at home, sitting here tonight, would you want your grandkids or kids living by an operating warehouse, potentially operating day and night? Potential health issues that never go away, and never being able to sleep with the windows open? open on a clear crisp autumn night, or sit out in the backyard, front yard, deck, or have the noise in the background at Newton Pond, which I saw fishermen in there tonight? You would have sound of backup beepers, truck engines idling, air brakes, horns, slamming of bay doors, truck doors opening and closing, and let's not forget the unknowns and intangibles once built and operational. There is still no known tenant, as far as I understand. While there's no doubt GFI has invested in numerous staff hours, efforts from various consultants, and reports, plus the financial aspect of 142 Clinton Street, this project is too big, too much, and too risky for the town and the Shrewsbury residents. What would be a better build option to benefit Shrewsbury? I firmly believe GFI's talent and willingness to want to do good in the neighborhood beyond talking with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, the Community Health Center in Worcester, and other business outreach, there must be another positive impact project out there that GFI could consider to benefit themselves financially, benefit the environmental justice community in both Shrewsbury and Worcester, provide less of an impact to the town of Boylston, all while providing local jobs and commercial tax revenue for Shrewsbury. With a positive impact project for Shrewsbury residents, additional positives include, but not limited to, protecting Shrewsbury's aquifer to the maximum ability, so there's less risk to residents for contamination, decreased liability for the party, whom is to be determined liable, I believe that was discussed earlier, preserve the wetlands and natural vegetation, protect the wildlife and natural beauty area of the town, become outstanding stewards to Newton Pond, and the entire watershed for Shrewsbury, and all the general public downstream. Limited impact to immediate butters, local residents, and the high school, minimal traffic, and more safety on local roads through town.
Ms. Dupree. I appreciate your comments. Like to try and give other people an opportunity to speak if they so choose. If you don't have any other questions, or, I understand that these are comments, and I do understand that they are important, and I certainly...
We're permitted to state comments. I do know that. I'm almost finished. Thank you. There was a MIPA extension through, at the request, and it was to May 10th, as it was stated before. We do think that this aid project needs to be done. This is just not the correct one for the town. Thank you.
All right, at this point, I mean, I think most of the questions have been presented this evening. If there's others that have, you know, pressing questions this evening, please, you know, feel free to let them know and speak up, please. Yes, Mr. Burns?
I know I already spoke, but it'll be next 30 seconds, I promise. See if we're able to jump it up. It was brought up while the last speaker was speaking, that what is happening in Grafton is not relevant to the conversation, and I wholeheartedly disagree. In fact, the attorney made it relevant when he used all of his experience at all of these other places as a reason why we should trust him here, right? So I just want to point that out. I think it is absolutely relevant, and I tried to Google, like, GFI Partners Research Facilities, and not get a lot of hits. Did get a lot of hits for warehouses. And I do feel like we got duped, you know? I feel like we were told that we were going to get a research facility, sounds great, and now we're getting a warehouse, and I'm disappointed. Thank you.
All right, there's no other questions or comments at this time?
I'd like to get some focus, to start to move this toward a process. We think the information that we've provided before, and summarized this evening, along with Mr. Walsh's comments on his review, satisfy the four criteria in the aquifer protection. If there are other concerns that those criteria haven't been met from the Board, we need to hear it so we can provide that information. Because right now, we don't sense any additional information as to the aquifer protection special permit required that we owe you. And I just want to focus on what we're going to do next.
Understood. I think we'll go back and look at any other questions or comments that are coming back to the town, and make sure that if there are questions that are related to this, that you are provided them and given the opportunity to address them, to make sure that we are being as diligent with this as we can. I don't, I mean, I don't know if there's any other questions specifically related to aquifer items this evening. If there is, I would welcome any opportunity for people to bring that up.
Well, just to frame it, it's not, with all due respect to all of the people who have spoken eloquently, it's not so much the thought, it's that there's some piece of information missing that we haven't provided, a concern that somehow the development isn't improving the condition as to the aquifer, isn't being done inconsistent with the purposes of the aquifer protection. So if those exist and you want more information, we're glad to try to get that information. Absent that, there are still, there's obviously the plan design that has to be taken care of in the ordinary course, but I think that's really down to engineering. There are, I guess, some open issues with regard to traffic, which we can be prepared to talk about in the context of the site plan review criteria, and not a general discussion on traffic. It has to relate to whether, under the criteria of your bylaw, whether the curb cuts and driveway openings are convenient and safe in relation to the adjacent street network. We'll come back prepared to talk about that and any other issues with regard to traffic in some fashion, and try to wrap up that at the next meeting. So we would hope that we could be moving on a path toward bringing, making sure you have the information to be able to move forward.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Regarding the traffic, my understanding from our last meeting, one of the focused meetings was the data that was considered for the assessment was not, included COVID-related data. MassDOT guidance was supposed to be something different, and there was an action item from that meeting that further assessment will involve the data based on the MassDOT guidance, and then potentially a subsequent peer review. Is that not happening?
No, I think that's accurate. That's been provided to the town's peer review consultant, and I assume that we'll close the loop, so.
Okay, so the next meeting, there would be details provided?
Yes, I believe that the peer review is looking at that information right now.
She's here.
Oh, sure.
Just another quick question before your answer.
Would the peer review include just the process or the data and the results itself?
Good evening, Maureen Lepatin from Bowman Consulting. We had conducted the original peer review, and as a result of those comments, yes, there was some data that was collected in 2020, was adjusted based on the COVID pandemic, and we had requested the applicant consider obtaining new data, given that there's going to be some MassDOT interaction for access permit and other improvements and mitigation that are proposed as part of the project, because MassDOT is no longer accepting old COVID data. So the applicant has gone out and got new traffic data for those locations and incorporated that into a revised traffic impact study, which we reviewed. We have some additional comments that were just filed today. Those are available on the town website. Just mostly some housekeeping items about parking clarification, as well as pedestrian improvement connections. There's a lot of mitigation that's proposed as part of the project. The project trips itself and the analysis that was presented, we're in general agreement with those results. Some of the study area intersections are operating with some movements that could use improvement, so there's a pretty robust mitigation plan that's proposed as part of the project. We can speak to that more at the traffic specific meeting.
Thank you.
So yes, we'll come, sorry, we will come summarize that. Ms. Lepatin can certainly weigh in, bring everybody up to speed as to it, and try to answer some of the questions that have arisen since that time.
Perfect, thank you. Yes, sir.
I know you want to go home.
No, I am here for as long as you guys want.
I'm Sullivan Eady, I live on Lamprey Drive, and the first thing I want to do is thank you guys. I can just tell that the toughest two years of my life, as my wife will tell you, was the second grade. Tonight was right up there with that. I'm going to tell you a very quick story, and then I'm going to point out two things that I hope don't get lost tonight. I heard about a town that went out and bought a brand-new fire truck. Got the fire truck, went to the fire hall, and guess what? The fire truck would not fit in the building. Somebody didn't do their due diligence. Murphy's Law. Everybody has a plan till they get punched in the mouth. Went out and built a new fire hall, took the truck over to the new fire hall.
If you could address the chair.
Sir, sir, sir.
If you could address your comments through the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I left eye blind, so I tend to turn my body. I apologize, okay? So my point is simple. You have to plan for the unexpected because things go wrong in life, they go wrong continually. Two things that I picked up from tonight, two really big concerns. I really believe that every one of you is doing everything they can for the town of Shrewsbury. An aquifer is a big deal, and I hope that we give due diligence because, as I said, things go wrong, things that you don't plan for. And what I'm hearing from a lot of these people is, when things go wrong, who's going to pay for it? That's my issue. These gentlemen right here gave a very coherent talk about their responsibilities and what they did, and they put all their ducks in order, and they sounded great. But that's not my concern. My concern is what happens down the road when they're long gone, and we've got a tenant, and all of a sudden the aquifer gets polluted? Where do we go from there? And I think people have tried to cover that. That's my one concern. My second concern, and I thank you for your time, is the gentleman back here with the red hat. Okay, I'm very concerned for anybody in town, he's got red hair, not a red hat.
Yeah.
I was going to call him a ginger, but he's bigger than me. Okay, my concern is for the people in that neighborhood that are going to have to deal with, how many trucks a day?
554.
Yeah, that's a pretty big number. And I do worry about things like kids running out into traffic, noise, things like that. So I'm just going to close by saying, guys, I can't thank you enough for what you do, and I just hope that you walk away tonight hearing the community.
Appreciate that, thank you. There's nothing else on this item this evening? We'll move on to the next item, Mr. Dutton?
I have a motion to continue.
Oh, thank you for that. I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until next meeting, June 6th at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion?
Motion to continue.
Is there a second?
Second, aye.
All in favor. Matt?
Aye.
You know, Mo?
Yes.
Julie, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Everyone, we are still in a public meeting, so I ask if you do have conversations, comments, please take them out into the hallway so we can continue the meeting. If you have other items, please feel free to stay behind.
All right, we're on?
I'm happy to turn that back over to you now, Mr. Chair.
All right. I guess, next, we're going to turn to the zoning warrant articles for the upcoming town meeting on May 20th, correct? And we'll take them in the order as they are presented on the agenda. Article number 32 is the Citizens Petition Zoning Map Amendment, and that relates to...
Correct, so this proposal is to amend the zoning map for a portion of property currently as limited industrial, and amend it to be commercial business. I believe the citizen petitioner is present.
Can you come up?
I thought you guys were just going to talk.
No.
Are you able to, point of order, are you able to be here?
Which is this for?
Number 32.
Your attorney, your partner.
Is this GFI?
Yes.
And then I can't act on this, I can't vote to recommend, but...
I just, you know...
No, I can't vote to recommend, you're right, okay. That's what I thought it was. To be honest with you, that's what I thought it was, because I didn't...
Just trying to help you out, you know?
I didn't think there was a second citizens petition. So you know what, I'll step out of the room, and I will, once again, turn it over to Ms. Olson.
Don't want to give you trouble, see?
No, no, you're absolutely right. I didn't think it would tilt.
Yes, sir.
I thought we were just here to have you guys talk. If you want me to talk, I can talk, it's up to you guys. I've talked to you before about it.
So I have presentations prepared on the zoning articles that were developed through our office and are proposed. I have not developed a presentation for the citizens petition.
We were told that we were here as a courtesy, and that you guys, only one of us, if you had questions. If you want me to talk about it, I can talk about it, but I, we already talked to you like a month ago.
Sure.
So it's up to you guys.
Yeah, so if there's anything further that the Board would like to hear from the co-petition around this, other than their presentation, if not, then we would, you know, the public hearing is open, so the process, if there's no additional information, would be to close the hearing.
Okay, I mean, I'm good, as a, does any of the Board members have any questions or comments on this particular petition?
No.
We've talked to FinCom, Conservation Select Board, you guys previously, so it's whatever you guys want.
Okay.
I don't think we can add anymore.
No, appreciate that, thank you.
The only complaint somebody made at one of the committees was our maps were not colorful enough, but we got the maps from the town, so...
So if that's the case, we would open it up to the public if there's any additional comment from the public.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments on article number 32 petition? If not, we'll make a motion to close the public hearing for this particular article?
Correct.
Is there a motion?
Motion to close hearing on this article?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of close, of closing?
Closing the hearing, correct.
Of closing the hearing.
Aye, yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Julie, yes, okay.
We would move for a recommendation.
Okay, so at this point, we'd like to enter, like to entertain a motion to move forward, or...
So it'd be, so the, looking for a recommendation, or a motion either to recommend, recommend this article, or recommend defeat of this article at town meeting?
Is there a motion to either recommend or recommend defeat for this zoning article for town meeting?
Motion to recommend the article.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Aye.
Julie? Yes. Mo?
We're, we're, is...
This is to recommend, this is to recommend the zoning article to go before town meeting?
No, 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 this is voting to recommend the article to town meeting.
Correct.
This is, this is, are we in favor? This is, this is, are we in favor of this, of this, of this article or not? Not put it on town meeting. It's already on town meeting. This is whether the planning board supports it or not.
My apologies, okay, my apologies, so it does, is there...
Maybe they, maybe they have the same vote, but it's about, these are all our recommendations to town meeting tonight.
Correct.
Motion, motion for the planning board to support this ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Matt? Aye.
Mo?
No.
Julie?
No.
Well, that gets reported as a two-to-two vote.
All right, on to the next article.
What does that mean?
I'm sorry?
So, so, sorry, I probably should have prefaced, so what this is, is recommendations from the planning board to town meeting members. So, they'll provide that recommendation, what you'll see is, it'll be, planning board voted, will provide a memo to town meeting members with all of the recommendations as voted tonight, and it'll say, the article thirty-two zoning map amendment, and it'll give the details, the motion, and all of that, and then it will say, planning board voted, two in favor and two opposed.
And then what happens?
Town meeting will vote on this article.
And then is it, is it accumulation of these votes plus those votes, or is it...
No, it's just town meeting vote, so this is just signaling to town meeting members, the planning board's stance on the article.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next article, article B, number B, under this, on the agenda, article number forty-two, section, section Roman numeral seven, capital E, digital signage. Anybody on the board have any comments relative to the language in article forty-two?
No.
Set forth in the packets that we were provided. We've discussed this a couple of times at prior meetings. I don't, do you know, no, Matt?
No.
No, Julie?
No.
Mr. DePaolo? Mo?
Well, yeah, I do, I, I, I think it's time to change the bylaw and address this, so I would support it.
Yeah. I, I, I agree, you know, I think digital signage is kind of the way of the future. You, you drive around and you see what's on other roads, but it's, it's got to be regulated, so...
The police station has one on.
Yeah, but it's got to be, it's got to be regulated, otherwise it's a free-for-all. So, I guess I would entertain a motion, I would close the, move to close the, I'm sorry, I'd open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public have any questions about article forty-two digital signage, or any comments? No, I don't see any. You raising your hand back there, no?
Sorry, I'm just...
No, okay, all right, that's fine, if they're...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on this particular article item.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I guess I'd poll the board, Matt, you in favor of closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mr. DePaolo?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well, so the motion carries. Next, I, I guess, as the public hearing is closed, I would entertain a motion to recommend article forty-two to town meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, all right, and I'd poll the board, Matt, in favor?
Yes.
Dino, in favor?
Yes.
Julie, in favor?
Yes.
Mr. DePaolo?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in favor as well, so that motion carries. And next, I, so I recommend, now we go, so that, we've recommended article forty-two to town meeting, now I move to item C on the agenda, article forty-three, section Roman numeral two definitions, farmers market definitions. And I would ask, does anybody on the board have any comments relative to the definition of farmers market? No, Matt, none?
No.
Dino, none?
None.
Julie, none? Mo, any comments as to the definition?
Yes. I think this is, it, it doesn't look like it's a big article, but it's an important article to help the sustainability of the, of the farmers market. Because it'll allow more vendors and more variety in there, which a lot of farmers markets have started to do because having a variety of product in there helps get traffic up, so, yes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for your comments, and again, yes, I'm in favor of this amendment to a relatively recent zoning amendment that we added in 2013, and further clarified in 2015, but I think this language makes sense. Anybody in the public have any comments relative to the change in the definition of farmers market? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on this article.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr., Dino has seconded. All right, now I would poll the board, Matt, you in favor of closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Dino, you're in favor of closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Julie, you're in favor of closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Mr. DePaolo, you're in favor of closing the public hearing?
Yes.
And I am as well. Okay, the public hearing on article forty-three is closed, now I would entertain a motion to recommend this change to the definition, recommend article forty-three relative to the change in the definition of farmers market to town meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Dino has seconded. All right, now I would poll the board as to this recommendation, Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mrs. DePaolo, you in favor?
Yes.
And I am in favor as well. Thank you, so, article forty-three has been recommended to town meeting. The next is probably the one that most of you are here for, is article forty-four relative to the various sections MBTA zoning.
Mr. Chair, I do have a brief presentation on, if I may.
Yep.
And thank, I understand the hour, and so I have a very brief...
That's okay.
So, in terms of this article, I did want to just preface, obviously, the, the board heard from the chairman of the Select, Select Board in terms of the process for tonight, and the request for a recommendation to recommend, simply as a procedural matter, not necessarily in favor or against the article as written, just to allow it to proceed into the fall process, fall town meeting. I did want to briefly discuss some of the aspects of the project, so certainly with the public engagement process to date, the board reviews, we've covered a number of topics, a number of specifics, we've gone with FinCom, we did a very in-depth dive in terms of some of the financial implications of the zoning proposal. I've covered the mandate and specifics of the mandate, as well as the compliance guidelines over a number of those presentations, and I, I'm not going to rehash those, but those will, that material will remain on the planning board webpage, and I just encourage people to go back to that and gather information from those presentations moving forward as well. So, again, article forty-four is the transit-oriented overlay. We're proposing to create a new overlay zoning district to meet compliance with chapter forty-eight, section three A, which is the multifamily zoning requirement for MBTA communities, it's part of the state mandate. The proposed zoning takes a transportation-oriented development approach with a redevelopment focus to achieve compliance while encouraging traditional mixed-use development, expanding on local design guidelines, which have generated successful mixed-use projects locally. Again, one of the major focuses from the state in terms of advocating this mandate is looking at the missing middle housing, and those middle housing densities, as well as the production of new housing. Again, I've spoken to that in much more detail in prior presentations. Speaking of colorful maps, I've been working on GIS, so we were able to produce some maps this evening, revised version with GIS, so it's a little bit more detailed. But this is the zoning district that is proposed, again, for those who may not be aware, we're proposing this over existing multifamily developments, an apartment district, mini terrace in the rural A district, as well as commercial and limited industrial districts, approximately where Christmas tree shops location is. I wanted to speak to the specifics of the bylaw language that we have written, and what the buy right uses would generate. I think it's important to note one of the major factors in terms of density, and in terms of looking at the development of projects, is looking at the table of lot conditions. So, we have them separated as both minimum conditions and maximum conditions. This is a fairly progressive planning practice that drives an ability to look at not just the minimum conditions, but also maximum in terms of limiting additional development. So, we do have a minimum lot area of forty thousand square feet, which is one of the larger areas that we typically, for lot sizes that we have, it's approximately one acre for consideration of this zoning, as well as standard frontage. We do have fairly low front yard setbacks, and this is intended to help with design, typically pushing development towards the actual right-of-way and the roadway structure, allowing for additional open space to the rear. You'll see that scales where then the side yards are a fifteen-foot setback, and the rear yard is twenty-five-foot setback. So, again, really trying to defend the street line through design guidelines, and create that traditional type of development. We're also requiring a minimum of twenty-five percent of the lot be dedicated to open space, as well as a maximum lot coverage of seventy-five percent. Going back to that district that you've seen, it is primarily already developed, and so we do see that having some of the, the higher lot coverage in tandem with open space will help for redevelopment of the location to balance existing kind of site coverage with open space development. We're also proposing building height of, a maximum building height of forty-five feet, and a maximum stories of, which correlates to a maximum number of stories of three. So, it's important to note that we are really proposing what the state considers fairly lower density on the scale that they have suggested in their model bylaw. I wanted to talk about, you know, I'm not going to go through the extensive design criteria that we have, but I wanted to talk about some of the inspiration that we used in terms of developing that language, and projects that we see as conducive to those design, to illustrate what we intend to allow as a buy right use with that site. So, a lot of the design guidelines were use, utilize the lightweight overlay district. We also modernized that with modern best practices in terms of land use policy and design guidelines, to make them somewhat more extensive here. Obviously, there's a multifamily buy right use that's required in order to be compliant, a compliant district, and we're proposing really, again, with that number of stories being three, the maximum three-story. Those buy right uses are what we see with existing in-town, those three-story townhouse-type structures. Again, we don't have a specific proposal that's before us, but we see that as the most viable housing type that would be developed by right under these guidelines. I also have, as an example here, this is two stories, but this is in Acton, it's the Acton Coffee Shop, and I, you'll forgive me, I forget the name of the specific plaza, but I can provide that offline, and I'll include that in the next presentation slide. But what that is, this is actually a mixed-use development that provides some apartments within the retail component, but again, really looking at the modern design aesthetics that fit with some of the transition from urban to suburban development types. And so, again, looking at that two-to-three-story buy right use, we intend to see that these are the types of projects that would be generated as a, as a buy right through the zoning as proposed. And then I did throw the other, in here is the Mashpee Commons was another example that we looked at that includes mixed-use components at two-to-three stories with significant architectural design standards. We have a lot of language in terms of location around courtyards and public amenities, similar to what you see in Mashpee Commons. So, those are some of the, the inspiration that we drew in terms of projects that we're looking to generate through those design guidelines. I do want to run through a couple of the language highlights, I'm not going to touch on all of these, I've, I've covered some of them in previous presentations, but again, the underlying zoning is not affected. Developers or property owners can still choose to pursue permitting under the existing zoning. Again, we're looking at transit-oriented development and smart growth principles driving those through the language that we've provided. We did include a mandatory mixed-use component, which consists of seventy-eight of the acres, the one-hundred-and-seventy-three acres that this district overlays. So, that contributes three-hundred-and-seventy-four units to our capacity count, but it requires commercial components in those districts, and that's where the underlying district is commercial or industrial, again, protecting those existing commercial areas from buy right multifamily-only development. We've included a number of landscape screening and site design standards, looking at, again, driving good landscape design and screening of mechanicals and dumpsters and other types of parking screening, to provide that aesthetic view of what is developed. Again, extensive design guidelines and off-street parking standards. We do encourage vertical mixed-use buy right over all horizontal mixed-use, requiring special permit via the planning board, so that encourages that development that I showed of that, the Mashpee Commons, where you have the apartments above the commercial components. I do want to note, in prior, in prior presentations, I did note that we were going to be requiring local and regional transit analysis, as well as school bus route analysis, and sidewalk and mobility hub amenities to be included as part of these projects only. Those will be removed from the proposal, and that's out of relation of, in discussions, and as we review the compliance guidelines in other communities, we cannot require additional studies beyond regular site plan rules and regulations. It's important to note that we are pulling that out of the proposal for MBTA, the MBTA-specific bylaw, and what we'll be requesting in the near future is that the planning board, through their site plan and special permit rules and regulations, take these studies out and place them in the site plan and special permit rules and regulations. What that will allow us to do is to include those studies, which we see to be placed with meaningful thresholds that would not preclude normal development, but would require studies, and that would be, become a townwide for anything, you know, in addition to the existing studies that we require. It would add these three additional studies if those thresholds for each of those are met. Townwide, anything triggering site plan or special permit would be required to provide these studies or have them waived by the board. So, although they're coming out of the MBTA proposal, they're not disappearing, we'll be requesting that they be put into normal action for any project. I did want to touch on existing regulations. I did want to touch on existing regulations, again, talking about those minimum required studies. So this is in our existing regulations already. So any by right development that triggers site plan approval does need to provide traffic, transportation, and circulation studies, again, which is peer-reviewed, a stormwater study, which is peer-reviewed, public services and fiscal impact studies, environmental impacts, and community impacts. So those studies as a by right use under site plan approval, those studies are all required or must be waived by the board. So I think it's important to note that that, you know, by right does not mean that a lot of the studies and a lot of the concerns that the public has raised, that those will not be addressed during normal course of action and review for these projects. There is no project that can go through the zoning as written that would not trigger site plan approval. I also probably put too small of text on this slide, but I did kind of highlight some of these. Again, this is the site plan approval criteria, which the board bases its decision on during this process. So again, looking at the internal circulation queuing egress such that vehicular and pedestrian safety is protected, looking at adequate parking and loading spaces, street networks and access via minor streets, building locations, grading, and vegetation buffers, visibility and noise, lighting, utilities, fire services and equipment, noise, odor, smoke, vibration, traffic generated, unsightliness, cultural resources, sensitive environmental resources, surface water runoff, minimizing contamination of groundwater, and any other requirements of the zoning bylaw being satisfied. So again, as this board is well aware, but I do want to illustrate for the benefit of the public, these projects will go through extensive review, and the board does have discretion in terms of reviewing them and approving them based upon those studies and the criteria that the board will base its decision on. And that's all I had for that article.
So I guess I would open it up to members of the board. Matt, do you have any comments about the Article 44, the MBTA zoning?
Not at this time, no.
You know?
No.
Julie?
I don't think so, not right now.
No. Mr. Powell?
No, not, not given what Select Board member Casabia said the Select Board wants to do.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
There'll be other times to discuss this, but again, yes, it's kind of anticlimactic. That said, I would open it up to members of the public. Sir, if you'd just state your name and where you live.
My name is Charles Garabedian, and I live at 24 Westmont Road. I have a question, a few questions for the board. The first one is, can you, looking at this request from the state to pass this law, can you list some positive impacts it would have for the town of Shrewsbury? Positive impacts? For any of you, all of you? You wish some?
I mean, first and foremost, it allows for the town to have the ability to go and pursue grants through the state. Those grants are critical to the town being able to continue to make improvements via infrastructure, via a number of different things. If, if that's not in place, the, the town's eligibility would not be there.
I think, I think it will add, ultimately will add to the tax base of the town of Shrewsbury. I, I don't think it will be a, a negative. If you look at the recent developments that have pumped to fruition, Lakeway Commons, Edgemere Crossing, these developments, I believe, i- i- if you look at them from an economic standpoint, and I haven't looked at them in the past two or three years, but looking at them, it's my understanding that the net benefit to the town from tax revenue versus any offset from services is quite significant. So I think that assuming that these developments are built in accordance with, similarly, or have the similar economic structures that Lakeway Commons or Edgemere Crossing, I would expect that there would be a benefit to the town, and I think that if you increase the housing base in town, it'll be, lead to more housing opportunities and may actually reduce the cost of housing. I think that's, the cost of housing is a significant issue in the Commonwealth. Maybe that's not specific enough to your question about how the town of Shrewsbury benefits, but I think that if the Commonwealth benefits, I would expect the town of Shrewsbury would also derivatively benefit.
There's two things. Is there, does anyone have a third one? No, no, just say, there's only two of them. Okay. Let's move on to another question. What do you see as some negative impact it would have on the town of Shrewsbury?
Certainly traffic. Potentially.
Pardon?
Certainly traffic, potentially, but the, but the developers, they have to try to address some of those issues.
Just one? Anyone else have any?
There's obviously others, but.
I, I would like to get them out and just have everybody look at them and compare the pros and the cons, and some of the things that we don't know really what's going to come down the road in terms of how viable these housing units are going to be. Right now, according to the numbers we understand, the housing units tend to give more of a finance backing to the town rather than a liability, but we don't know if that's going to happen with these new developments, but there's nothing we can do about that.
We never do.
I understand, understand. Are there any other negatives that you can see? Okay.
Traffic.
That's fine.
Potential impact on schools, potential impact, but those are unknowns, but I, I think if you look at the apartment buildings that have been built in the town of Shrewsbury, the apartment projects in the recent past, that they have not, the amount of projected schools, impact to the schools has been less realized than was projected.
Right. So my third question is, explain to me why this is called the MBTA bill, or you keep on using the, the MBTA reference.
Yeah, so I, I do want to touch on a little bit. I, you know, from the, from the previous questions in terms of the pros and cons and evaluating these projects, I, I think what I'd like to say is, is that in the presentations that I've given previously, I think we've gone over that in, in broad terms and general terms. I think we've identified a number of near-term benefits through looking at the grants and the impacts to the community in terms of loss of opportunity of those discretionary grants, as well as the projects that we anticipate pursuing in the near term related to those grants. We've also done fiscal analysis of what we see as a potential development under this zoning. So we've, we've, we've looked at those in general terms. I, I understand the community's desire to more intimately evaluate the impacts of this potential zoning, and what I would suggest is that the time to do that, as we've seen this, this evening, a significant amount of time that the board has taken with the community to, to evaluate a project through a by right zoning process, is that that is the time when there is a specific project to do that in-depth analysis, and that's why our, our department in writing the, the zoning language that's proposed was diligent in writing it in a way that limits development to the minimum allowed to meet compliance with the state mandate as by right. It would be very difficult for a developer to not trigger special permit to build beyond existing conditions under this zoning proposal, and that special permit gives the board additional discretion from what was described tonight, those studies that I think speak to a lot of the discussion in terms of traffic mitigation, and evaluates those when we have a specific project. So I, I think that is the time to evaluate those in more, in more depth. We've certainly gone through significant effort to provide a general analysis of those pros and cons to the community. I just wanted to mention that.
I, I think the legislation's going to be upheld, and I think, I guess what I'd be concerned of, with is, say we, we take the Milton or the Marshfield route, and town meeting doesn't approve the legislation, and I think Chris has done a good job of drafting the legislation, which, you know, there's aspects that none of us like, but my concern is, is that the remedy that the courts, once the courts get involved, will be to impose a more draconian measure, saying, okay, you couldn't get it done, you were supposed to get it done, and then all of a sudden you have a judicial fix to something that the town should have fixed at town meeting. That's my concern.
I don't think he answered my question.
I'm not sure what your question is, but.
Yeah, well, let's go back to my, this is my third question now. My question to you is, what is the connection of this bill to the MBTA, where the name of it has become the MBTA?
Sorry, thank, I did, I did miss that piece. So the, the reason that the state mandate calls us the MBTA multi-family housing requirement is because they use the, the definition of MBTA communities when designating the 177 communities that were subject to this mandate. So it's, it's not every community in Massachusetts that has to meet this mandate. It's only ones that are either directly served by the MBTA or the adjacent communities being near, next to a community that is served by MBTA.
Now, why are they selecting those communities?
Because we're next to the town of Graffin that has a train station.
And what has that got to, what is, these, what have these building, this, these building projects of homes and more people, how is that related to the rail line that goes from Boston to Worcester, actrick, extends beyond Worcester? But right now, the community just stopped.
So the, the state has expressed that their, their reasoning to target communities that are served by the MBTA or adjacent was to meet planning practice, again, that transit-oriented development principle of co-locating density where existing infrastructure is in place in terms of transportation opportunities. The idea behind that is allowing those multi, multimodal transportation opportunities to hopefully mitigate, as a proactive measure to mitigate traffic impacts by allowing less vehicle trips needed if people are using public transit opportunities.
Then would it be fair for me to say that they're attempting to get people in Shrewsbury and Graffin and all these other towns that are above this rail line or close to this rail line to use public, that, those trains from Worcester to Boston instead of taking a car into Boston? Am I right? Is that what they're trying to do?
I, I mean, I, I think the overarching goal is to increase housing production in the state. I think there's, there's ancillary targets to increase potentially ridership on the public transit opportunities, but I, I think the primary objective of the state is to increase housing production.
So it's, it would seem to me from what you're telling me that what we would really like to see for a really maximum success, if I may make, make that word up, maximum success, is to have people that come into the homes that we're going to build or the pumps that we build, will have a reason to go into Boston, hopefully five days a week, because if they want to support that train, somebody that rides it once a week, once a month, twice a month, they're not looking for that business. They're looking for five days a week. Therefore, we're looking for people that work in Boston or in the Boston area. Hopefully, that would be the best for us to have, to live into those homes. So I would ask, we don't know who's going to go into those homes. How many people in those homes are going to be working in Boston? We don't know. Therefore, what is the probability that somebody living in that home, in, in those complexes is going to be working in Boston? We don't know.
We do not.
So it's like flipping a coin. The probability of a head is one half, the probability of flipping the tail is one half. So is it fair to say that the probability that a person that lives in that home and works in the Boston area is one half? Is that reasonable to maybe say?
I'm not a statistician.
What I'd suggest, what I'd.
I'm just, I'm using the word reasonable.
What I'd suggest, since we are likely to have significant time between now and the fall, is that our office can look at undertaking some analysis of commuter data. I know the census is pretty extensive in terms of their commuter data. I believe the 2020 average is, the average is 45 minutes, and we can look at if there's additional analysis in terms of that specific data that may not be the census. I know, I know there've been studies that do that. I can see if we can consult with either CMRPC or through one of the other grants provided to have such a study completed.
The way, the way the legislation was drafted and the way this, the way this has transpired is kind of formulaic. You have to have X number of units.
Right.
So we got to live with the legislation that has been handed to us.
Well, obviously, the, the, the legislation is rather poor, because before proposing that type of legislation, I should think they would have done some type of study, some type of research into the type of people that are going to be living in all these towns.
That ship has sailed.
Pardon?
We're just dealing with the after effect.
I, I realize that, but this is one reason that I am opposed to this. You don't give somebody, a hungry person, a raw piece of meat and say, here, eat this, that'll feed you, or a rotten piece of meat, and that's essentially what they're doing. Well, let me move on.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Garabedian.
Yeah, I, I think.
I don't think there's anybody in town government that loves this zoning. Okay?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking that question.
But the reason that we were bringing this forward, and we are bringing it forward, is because, given the circumstances, by doing our own zoning within the confines of this zoning law, we have the most flexibility. If we don't do this, and, and cities and towns decide to fight it, and they, and we lose, which we probably will if 40B is any kind of an example, then we're probably going to end up with a more draconian zoning that we're going to be stuck with and we're going to have to deal with. 40B has been around for at least close to 30 years, and nobody's been able to knock it out yet, and this is going to be a similar situation. We need to take advantage of the opportunity to create the zoning that we want, because, you know, if we don't, this isn't going to mean that we're not going to have any more apartments in Shrewsbury. Until we can get to the point where we can build enough affordable housing, according to the state, that we can say no sometimes to affordable housing, we're going to get 40Bs, because that's where the money is, and that's where the demand is. The demand is for people to have someplace to live. So if we don't do this, there is nothing to stop the people who own these pieces of property that are being proposed to be in this zone to go in and build a 40B and end up with the same amount of units as we would get with this, but without the possible, the possible benefit of having a mixed-use, mixed-use development where we have a retail component to it. So we're trying to make the best of a bad situation. I don't think there's any community in this state or of the 170 whatever that would, would say, yes, we want to do this zoning. We're saying we need to make the best decisions we can make, given this, evaluating what the pluses and minuses are, and the big minus is the state can hammer us over the head, and we are being in a worse position than we are now. and we are being in a worse position than we are now.
I, I don't think I could say it any better than Mister DiPaolo has said it.
That's still not related to my initial comment, my initial question was.
I, I think I'd like to have some other people speak at this.
Could I finish up?
Real brief.
Yeah, it'll be real brief. Let me go on to another question.
No, I think you've done.
No, no, no.
You just asked two questions. I, I, I'd really like, the night is getting long in the tooth. I would like some other people to ask.
Could I just say one more thing?
You can say one more thing.
The probability of someone living in that Boston area is one half. The probability of that person living in that apartment and taking the train, say, is one half. So the probability that a person is working in Boston and taking that train is one half times one half, which equals one-fourth. That's twenty-five percent. So you have a twenty-five percent chance of somebody supporting the MBTA.
Thank you.
And complying with this.
Thank you, Mister Garabedian.
Thank you very much, but it is sad.
All right, I said enough, please, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if I could open it up to someone else, please, thank you.
All right, Ted. So, so given that, is there anyone else who requires the cart that's in attendance tonight? That's using that service? That's using the ser, the service, sorry, the, the transcribing service? No, I just wanted to make sure, so I'd like to.
Can I just take a break? I'm happy to stay, but I just need a break.
We, we record them.
Yeah, we record it, so yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I guess Greg Richards, sixteen Hickory Drive. Actually, a couple of questions, actually a comment first. I just wanted to, to kind of clear up, there's a comment made by the select board. They use terms like misinformation and distraction. And I kind of take offense to the terms that they used because there's a lot of us who have spent countless hours longer than I wanted to looking at this because it's something we're all passionate about. And when we're dismissed by the elected officials in the town, it, it doesn't send a good message. So, you know, I don't like the terms, it shouldn't be used because there is a lot of information out there. There's a lot of webinars we've all watched, it's published by the Mass Housing Partnership, and there's a lot of information that we're consuming, you know, to discuss this in a meaningful way.
There's nothing I can say or do that would.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just making the comment, understood.
Or, or, or help you with that perceived slight.
No, I know, I'm just making the comment because I want to make sure it's been heard, that's all. The one comment I do have in the warrant, I never had brought it up before, Chris, was the reference to forty R. Because it was in the warrant article, and I know one of the things was two things. The twenty percent affordability for forty R and then also twenty units per acre. So I know that you've always had the fifteen units max, so I don't, I just question this, why forty R is listed?
The forty R references have been struck from the article as currently written. And the reasoning for that is the, the draft of our economic feasibility analysis indicates that we're only allowed to pursue fifteen percent of affordable housing. In order to be considered under the forty R, we would require, we would need to be able to, to do twenty percent. So we're unable to pursue forty R, so we've taken that language out. Should, you know, the, the economic, the consultant that did the economic feasibility analysis is seeking clarification from the state in terms of the potential that we may be able to go up to twenty percent. Again, I, at this point, I think it's unlikely, but if that should change, then we'll have that conversation. But at this point, we're no, no longer pursuing any forty R.
MBTA zoning has made transit-oriented zoning an irrelevancy.
Correct.
For those one hundred and seventy-seven, one hundred and seventy-eight.
Yeah, I just was confused, I just.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's, it's not in the warrant anymore?
We're, we're no longer pursuing forty R as proposed. And if that changes, then we'll, we'll communicate that to the public.
And I did have another question on the way that the zone, the, the last time you divided it, there's three segments. And then in the, I, I know I don't want to get into the weeds too much, but just one question. When the town manager and you were discussing the, the financial impact, the, the, they used a term like the, the likely feasible units was around this eight hundred and fifty-three number. And there was zero in that, the multi-use district that was in the middle. There was zero contributing to what those feasibly built units was. And I was kind of questioning why there was zero, like essentially saying that we don't feel like there'd be any residential units built in the mixed-use, mandatory mixed-use, which by definition, if it's mandatory mixed-use, there has to be, if somebody chose to build there.
So the, the compliance model, so again, that Excel spreadsheet that the state provides and how it calculates out the mandatory mixed-use, so those seventy, in the compliance model, those seventy-eight acres do not contribute to compliance. That's why we submitted the mandatory mixed-use, which submits that to the state and says that, that we collect that maximum three hundred and seventy-four units that gets tacked on to our compliance. So the compliance model shows us at, you know, at compliant numbers with that three hundred and seventy-four being offset.
Correct, I was just commenting on when the financial feasibility, the slide that you had with town manager at the, the finance committee was that there was zero units contributing to net new units. That was all, that was my, that was my comment on that. And I know since it's deferred to the, the fall, I don't have to go into all the other details, but it was just one question, so I think.
The eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty-three units is what we calculated out in terms of the multifamily-only development that would be permissible by right with the zoning, so.
Okay, thank you.
And it is formulaic.
Correct.
Yes.
Literally an Excel spreadsheet.
Sure. State your name and where you live.
Couple of questions, Brian Costello, three ninety at Walnut Street. On the, just as a procedural question, on the warrant, the, what is the language that we're at town meeting? The select board has said they're going to, they say vote no, but this board has to say recommend.
Correct.
But not a yes or a no. In other words, is it explained that we want you to vote no because it's going to be on the October ballot?
So town meeting has and, and does have the final say in terms of at May town meeting and the disposition of this article. The record will reflect that the select board has voted to recommend defeat of the article. It will reflect that the planning board, if they so vote tonight.
I don't know what we're gonna do.
Which I would ask that they, they recommend for passage of the article, but it will be made clear to town meeting members through that memo that that is a procedural matter to allow it to proceed to fall. I, I think the select board's recommendation to defeat, probably on its own, would signal to town meeting members the recommendation to defeat. It's unlikely that it would be passed.
And during this process, we mentioned that you're taking out the forty R language. I also think that in this, in the new warrant, it has to be, we should use colloquial terms of how the law is used in, in public. I think you have three A and all that, the average person's not going to know what that is. It should say the multifamily zoning requirement that, for MBTA communities. That's how people refer to it, that's how the news refers to it, that's how everybody in here refers to it.
So it does.
Say that, we shouldn't try to.
It does say that.
Rules. Finally, just a comment on, I disagree. Actually, what I hear at the finance committee, the planning board, planning, excuse me, Chris, your, your meetings and others is, we have to do this because, well, that's just the law. And towns have actually voted it down after their planning boards have voted for it and after their select boards have voted for it. Some politicians have paid the price this week for that. And the AG recently, obviously she's suing towns, but she also said in an interview with Jim Broad last week, it's not my job to overrule the voters, right? What this gives us is leverage. So voting against this, I understand procedurally, from a bureaucratic perspective, it seems like a good idea. We just have to go with it because it might be bad if we don't. I'm telling you that the reason the law exists and the courts exist is to negotiate, right? As an attorney, I, I look at things and I say, when things break, it's a negotiation. The more towns that are voting against us, and they are, the more opportunity we have to go to politicians in Boston who are there and understand the political process to negotiate a better deal. And the more you negotiate and the longer you keep negotiating, guess what happens? Towns aren't happy with this, to your point, you're not happy with this, you don't necessarily want to do this. The more towns that actually speak up against this and band together will have the opportunity to make that challenge. And more importantly, they will be able to put the politicians on notice. Guess what? The Attorney General, not going to be there forever, he's, either is the governor, doesn't matter. And if more people see this and they see the state trying to take control of zoning and another control of zoning, beyond forty B, I think people have had enough, these are not, this is, ask anybody in town, do you want more apartments? The answer is going to be a hundred percent no. And as for the size, how many three bedrooms are at the Edgemere? None, zero, not one, right?
That was a point of contention.
Yeah, and the, this is a family unit. The, the law doesn't state you have to have three bedrooms, but it does state it has to be family-friendly. These are going to be large units, three and four bedroom.
No bedroom requirement.
There's no bedroom requirement, it says family-friendly, and I'm going to tell you, Chris, you're wrong on this because they're going to make you.
UHLC general language that they have.
It's not general enough. I understand you're looking at it from a bureaucratic perspective.
I, I rankle at the insinuation that I'm simply some bureaucrat that is going along with this mandate. That's, that's simply not the fact, I have stated multiple times.
You've actually stated that in a meeting before.
Multiple times that I'm.
Let's, let's keep it civil and let's, let's, Mister Costello, let's.
When I use the word bureaucrat, perhaps I mean public employee. The fact is, a public employee does have, has to look at it narrowly because that's their job. The people are here to say, this is not what we want. This is something we want to fight, this is something we are against, and I think we have to just stand up. Those units are going to be large, they're going to be market-priced, and they're going to bring a lot of schoolchildren into this town. The numbers that they gave us at the finance are wrong because they're based on the Edgemere numbers.
That hasn't, that hasn't borne out in Lakeway Commons or Edgemere.
Not big units, and this is not fifteen hundred units, and I know you're saying nine hundred, it's going to be fifteen hundred. It's going to be a lot and it's going to, when you look at it, when you look at the number of kids, that little change makes this net positive tax to net negative. And I'm telling you, that's what's going to happen, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Catherine Rajwani, twelve Old Colony Drive in Shrewsbury. I just, I had a question, so the town planner is recommending that this committee, the, I think the language he said was recommend the passage of Article forty-four.
Now, this board, town planner works, town planner works for us. He gives us his input, but this board will make the decision whether to recommend this article to town meeting.
Okay, I thought I had heard him say that that would be his, he suggested that, right?
That's his opinion.
Right, that, 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 that would. And so what I, what I guess what I'm trying to understand is if the select board is recommending that town meeting defeat this article, why would, you know, the town planner, as he said, recommend that this committee, you know, pass it?
We're appointed by the manager.
Sure.
So we're kind of independent.
Okay.
We're not elected, we're appointed by the manager, we're kind of independent.
So I guess I'm, so, okay, so two different entities, but why would you pass, why would you pass an article? Because what we had heard before from the board is we're just going to go through this whole process again.
I, we're going to go through the process again, but you know, I guess I'm of a different view of Mister Costello. I used to try a lot of cases, I don't do it anymore. And my view was always, I'll try my winners, but I'll settle my losers. And I think that this article is kind of a settlement proposal for certainly not a great law, but it's, it's something that I think if the AG pushes it, we're going to lose. And I worry about what the remedy would be in its place.
And sure, but.
So that, that's, that's just my thoughts.
So, but I guess what I'm wondering is why would the recommendation be that you, you pass this article when it's going to be, you know, basically the.
So we can take it up again in the fall. If we, if we don't recommend it, my, the way the law is written, then the town meeting can't take it up again for another two years.
Oh, so that's why, okay, so, because I knew there, everyone was talking about proceduralness and that.
If the town, so, you know, if it doesn't pass in October, so be it, we'll see what happens.
Okay, but does.
I hope you're all town meeting members and you get to, to, to vote.
But then doesn't, okay, but doesn't that put this committee then in a, in a bind in terms of passing, passing something that the board doesn't want?
I've been doing this for twenty-six years and I always ask myself, I'm continually in a bind. And I ask my, and my appointment's up in twenty-five, and I say, why would I want to do this? So I guess I'm used to being in a bind.
Yeah, it just seems to me that, you know, that perhaps the, the better way to proceed would be not to pass it rather than try and preserve the ability to pass it later, so.
Thank you.
I would suggest that.
Okay.
Do not be.
I appreciate your suggestion. Anybody else have any comments? Sir?
I just have a couple of quick questions.
Yes.
And I apologize for.
No.
My last behaviors, I'm going to face you guys. First question, can, and you might not be able to, can you tell me how many students our high school is currently rated for? In other words, what's the maximum capacity of our high school?
I, I don't have that data on hand, but I, I.
I think it's a two thousand neighborhood.
It, it, maybe you know this, it, it's been my understanding that there's more students in the high school than there should be. In other words, we're rated for a maximum capacity of X number of students, and I've been told, haven't done my homework, I apologize, but I've been told that we have an overpopulation already in the high school. Can you verify or, you know, deny that?
I've seen.
And if you can't, that's fine.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I've seen stuff, I, I saw something about that, that maybe a potential expansion of the high school is needed. But then I read an article in the Globe about the declining enrollments in Newton High School and then they built this Taj Mahal and now they may have to take school choice kids. I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I understand, and, and I should have come a little bit better prepared for this, but we have spent hours trying to figure out this article.
Okay.
My third question is, and maybe you can answer this, does anybody know the cost of the last building that we built, school building in Shrewsbury? How much it cost the taxpayers?
I think it was a hundred and sixty million, I don't know what. I don't know what, I don't know what the matching funds from the school building assistance authority.
Sounds good, my next question would be.
Mr. Lycus?
Yes.
And what? Wait, our, our cost on bill was somewhere in the eighties.
Eighties.
It came in well below budget.
I thought it was projected to be a hundred and sixty.
Okay.
No, the, the one sixty is a number that was thrown around because of the, I just lost you. That was thrown down as just like, like a back-of-the-envelope number for the.
All right.
What?
Mister DiPaolo would know better than.
What they're looking at for the high school.
He, he has more of an institutional knowledge of the workings of the town than any of us.
Sounds good, thanks, Mo, I thought that was God there for a minute, I couldn't even figure out who was speaking. Sorry, Mo, happy birthday. So I guess my point that I'm trying to make is regardless of any grant money that we're going to pull in.
Yep.
And grant money is not guaranteed as far as I know. And I've written many grants, I was an elementary teacher for twenty-five years. I think that the cost of a new building, cost of infrastructure, cost of teachers, all of that is going to far outweigh any grant money that we're going to get. Now, I understand that you think this is something we can't fight, I'm just trying to share some information here. So I really see this as a huge negative loss in the long run that's going to once again be dumped on the taxpayers. And I'm going to share one dirty little secret that, that's true, and some people probably aren't going to want to hear it. I know for a fact that in the wintertime, when the bus, buses go to pick up schools and a lot of these avalons and stuff, you can see into the apartments and they've got bunk beds. And sometimes we have two or three families in one unit. And what happens is now a very small percentage of the taxes that they pay, they're sending numerous kids into the school buildings, and that is a detriment to our educational system. And, and those are the kinds of things that really worry me, and I hope that we, we try to fight this as best we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I take this gentleman first? He, he raises his hand a millisecond before you. I want to kind of wrap this up, though. Is everybody really passionate?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to have, we're going to have another opportu, you've heard the way this has been choreographed. You're going to have another opportunity, another bites at the apple.
Well, that's good. We'll take a few bites at the apple. So I'm Jamie Marandino, precinct nine, Berkshire Road. So over the past, you know, few months, I've been trying to educate myself with a bunch of information, right? All the video stuff, the drop in calls we had with Chris and individual discussions, other things that I've been looking at and trying to grab a hold of. What does this really mean as an impact for, for Shrewsbury? And, and as we've been talking about it, I think there, there's a few things that I'm hoping and I'm very, very happy about the deferral to, to fall because that gives us some opportunity to really dig deeper into a few areas. And so I would suggest a couple is, one, when we talk about the number of units, we talked about, I think 1,100 was batted about the last, last week at the finance committee. 850, 1,500, a number of, of numbers, we'll call it. I don't know that that's all the numbers. Because I believe that we also need to incorporate all the other new new apartments that we have coming into and, and units that we have coming into Shrewsbury. So, so the old Beale School, Green Street and Stony Hill. And so I'd ask a question, Chris, perhaps, is when you go back through and think around the feasibility of it all and the impact and such, how will you incorporate? Kind of everything is an ecosystem, you know, in Shrewsbury and inclusive of, you know, next one, three, five, seven, whatever number of years. Because as we've all experienced here in Shrewsbury, there's been growth over the past seven, 10 years, what have you. We're all part of that. How will that growth be incorporated? How would the entire new new that we have on a drawing board now be incorporated into that study?
So the Affordable Housing Trust will be pursuing an update to their housing production plan, which will delve in excruciating detail into a lot of that new growth and affordability. So I'd suggest that that study is forthcoming and it'll be interesting how that effort relates to this zoning.
Yeah. I, my opinion is, okay, you, you look at the thing at Stony Hill that's in the process of getting built. Beale School, it's got a permit that's under appeal. If it's, the decision is affirmed on appeal, I assume it's going to get built. Anybody else would be crazy to build anything but anything in the MBTA zone, assuming that it passes because it's going to, a 40B, it, it, it's, I, I, I think it's going to make most 40Bs financially unfeasible because this is more favorable zoning.
All right. So I guess I'm wondering too a bit as to the unused land, we have more landmass around Shrewsbury. And so that be zoned as well for residential, perhaps changing of zoning if we give up this zoning right and giving up some of that ability to locally govern ourselves and centralizing that, that decision making. Concerns me a bit as to, you know, what landmass becomes next and how much we control growth versus accelerate growth. And how much of our infrastructure can hold that? I guess it's just a, you know, thing I'm trying to wrap my head around as to how much growth.
You know, I, I think Mr. DiPaolo and I were of the belief that we, we see that these units are getting put along the Route 20 corridor. We were of the belief that the commercial and industrial uses in the Route 20 zone, the overlay zone, limited industrial, whatever, be expanded such that maybe we could have more of a commercial tax base rather than people looking to do 40Bs on industrially commercially zoned land. But that, that was just Moe and my thought.
That was back of the envelope, right? So, so here's, I guess, another picture that I have in my head. And whether, whatever the, you know, the number is, 1,500, 1,900, several years from now, what have you. If you look at how many people, census would say roughly 2.6 people for a, you know, a family friendly unit. Multiplying that by the number of units that we grow, in essence, we're adding a new small town, you know, into Shrewsbury. And so I wonder about things like, and some things have been mentioned, one of the things that, that kind of got touched on a bit is utilities. So we share with Westboro their waste treatment facility. We have an agreement with them, how many gallons per day, four or five million, whatever the gallons per day is. And they get, and also they're in a moratorium right now. I just, just have that to do a study for, you know, for the future capacity and demand and all that sort of thing.
We also.
So, you know, how's that get incorporated into the feasibility studies?
We also tied into the Upper Blackstone. That was what that work on Route 20 was.
Okay.
We're also, we're also served by the Upper Blackstone now.
Okay. So Westboro though is at capacity and we rents, we'll call it rent space, rent gallons, correct? You know, from them. And they're out of capacity. And so what does that mean from the standpoint of Shrewsbury's impact to Shrewsbury? That's my question.
We, for, in terms of utility capacity, we did submit preliminarily an expression of interest to CMRPC to pursue specifically related to water capacity and analysis and, and for Shrewsbury for, related to housing production. And more generally than just the zoning, but housing production in the community in terms of water capacity. So it's just an expression of interest. We're hopeful that we'll be successful in, in pursuing that study opportunity with CMRPC.
But I don't think the, this zoning like 40B gives a developer the opportunity to cut the line.
No.
Respect to capacity or.
This, this zoning mechanism, so this permitting mechanism in my belief would give the community significantly more leverage over 40B to require infrastructure improvements for any project proposed under that zoning.
Okay. And so part of my point to, this is at a cost, right? These are, these are costs involved in the, the development and expansion of the, of the town and the use of the water treatment, the wastewater treatment, those sorts of things. So just, you know, ensuring that as we're going through and digging more through, which I think is fantastic because we get to have more public debate. And that's what the republic is built on, right? There's public debate and the will of the people to have that debate back and forth. That's healthy. Disagreement is when breakthroughs happen, right? Agreement, that's group think, right? So disagreement really is what we're looking for. So we get to a better solution, right? And, you know, our town manager just mentioned that the other night is that, hey, maybe there's a different way to cut this thing. You know, he's, he suggested that. So hopefully we have time to be able to get to that kind of a point and have a, you know, hopefully, or I think anyway, could be a more feasible solution than where we are right now. Understanding the fight at hand, right? Understanding the fight at hand.
So our office from, from the beginning has been, you know, happy to engage with the public on these topics and will continue to do that with however much time that we have to, to engage and to discuss this topic. And I think that that's important and, and what I would ask of the community, if I can be so bold, is that moving forward, as we look at this and as we have this public discussion, that we look at the merits of the zoning as proposed, regardless of the feelings towards the, the state mandate and that. Because that is certainly tied to this process and something that we continue to consider. But, but certainly as we get towards town meeting and the approach that our office has taken in developing this zoning has been looking to put forward, you know, proper zoning for the district within the compliance guideline that are proposed for the state. So what I would ask is that we have the discussion based around the merits of the specific zoning language and our proposal more so than, you know, I'm not excluding the entire mandate process, but, but less about that because I think, I think we have really worked diligently to put forward proper zoning within that compliance criteria.
Thank you for that perspective, Chris. Appreciate it. And feel free to be bold, right? I mean, that, that's, that's where we'll make some, make some strides in this whole thing. And again, part of it is this zone and part of it, and I'll conclude this because other people want to chat. Part of it is this zone that people are concerned about, right? Seeding away local, local authority to a centralized source. I'd be more concerned even about what happens after this, right? If you continue to seed your ability to locally govern, where does that lead? We don't know. We prognosticate, I suppose, but it never, never seems to lead to a great place. So I would be, you know, just wary of that in my mind. You can feel free to disagree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Tony Bonaventura, 120 HAV, precinct four. I think usually we're supposed to say that, right? So actually picking right off, picking right up after what the gentleman before me was saying. It seems like this board, according to Mo on the, from wherever he is, feels that all 170 towns don't like this. I know we can't speak for all 170 towns that are part of this, but they don't like this zoning.
I assume a lot of them don't.
Right. So I guess the, the thought is, you know, don't push back. Just try and, you know, let the bully push you around a little bit more and find a way to not get beat up too bad. That's kind of the tone that we're hearing. You said you were, I think you'd said that you're worried about, you know, lawsuits. I agree. Usually you need to settle them. You kind of bicker back and forth and at some point it settles out. I think 90% of them are settled. So the question would be, what do we think? How many towns would it take to turn the tide on this if we do stand up against this? Is it 50? Is it 20? Is it 100? I think there's a number. I think we all agree with that. Do we have any thoughts on that?
I.
With your experience?
My experience is when you have a problem, you try to get ahead of it. And I think that's what we've attempted to do here.
Get ahead and try and comply.
Get ahead of it to ensure we comply in the least unpalatable way.
That sounds like giving in to us, I think, the people that are concerned about this.
Not giving in. No, it's not giving in to you because I, I think that, I know that I'm going to likely vote to advance this to town meeting. So I'm not giving in to you. But I, I don't think that your position is a winning position.
Well, my, my, my point is if we as a town, you know, there are a few that are, that are going out on their own.
Marshfield.
Right. But if we, if we increase that number and, you know, perhaps you even know this, is it possible for five or 10 towns, if they are against this and don't comply? And there is some legal maneuvering, is it possible for towns to split that cost? Is there any law against that? Can towns collaborate together?
Probably not.
So I think that would make it more appealing to a lot of towns if we could collaborate and have five, 10. I actually think that's, is a pretty good gamble because I think that will, that number will continue to grow because it will, because it will become more advantageous. So we, I believe that there is a time to stand up. I, I don't agree with the, at all with the numbers where this is at all profitable with these apartments when you look at the cost. I saw the presentation in front of the finance committee. You know, we could spend a lot of time on those numbers, but there are many budget item numbers in our town that are missing. I think they, they estimated that pupil cost at somewhere around $4,000. I mean, the best you can bring that down to is about $10,000. And the range can go all the way up to about $15,000 per pupil. So that right alone puts it in the negative. At the numbers that were given to us, the point four estimate. So I think that's a big concern that this is most likely not profitable or revenue positive to the town. Because it's not positive, because I've heard this for different people, and that's actually over the course of 10 years, a lot of different people. All we've heard over and over again when it comes to 40B is, I'm sorry, we're forced to do it. We don't like it, but we have to deal with it. That's what's been said.
That's the zoning board. That's not the planning board. The planning board at times is asked to make certain recommendations. But we do not, this board does not vote on 40Bs, does not get involved generally with 40Bs.
You, you get into it after, after that process.
Sometimes.
Yeah, a little site plan stuff.
Yeah, sometimes.
But so, so the zoning board, the zoning board, so regardless, the town, a town board that's been telling us for years that, you know, just deal with it. We have no choice. And I, it's understandable. But here we are again. So we already see that that wasn't enough. Now there's another one. And like somebody said before, guaranteed, once you go down that line, we have lost our autonomy as a town. In fact, in a business, you would ask to start eliminating towns and merge because it would be, if you're not making the decisions locally, what are we doing? And we feel, we've all felt over these past few years, somebody mentioned it before, everybody is feeling like we're getting too crowded, we're getting too condensed, the traffic issue. We, we talk about Edgemere. Market basket's great. The traffic's not. I'm, you might be aware of this. I've been taking that trip for 30 years. From Shrewsbury to Worcester, a six or seven minute trip. I literally timed the other day. You know, the traffic is backed up from Route 20 to sometimes beyond Lake Street. But typically it's very average to find it backed up to the gymnastics center. That, that's, that's very typical at odd times, you know, certain times of day. It could be three, it could be four, it could be two. I've hit it. It's, it's weird times.
Times, yeah.
Yeah, it's very weird. I wish I knew because I would avoid it. But that wait, and I timed it, listening to the radio, relaxing, eight minutes, eight minutes to get from the gymnastics center to Route 20, which typically I would make an eight minute trip a few miles into Worcester, eight minutes of us right there. That's only going to compound. There's no answer to those. So everybody's feeling, the, the point is everybody's feeling under pressure.
Okay. You have a question or is that?
It's just a comment. I do have, I have one, that's a comment. One last question though. One last question. I'm still confused. I think some people are still confused on why you have to recommend it. You said that something about two years if you don't?
Yes.
So what is, is there something that we can look at that?
There's a statute.
When, could you explain it just a little more?
48, section 40 something, section five or something.
Yeah.
It's the section that deals with zoning amendments. Chapter 48, section five.
I believe it's section five, but it's, it's in terms of the procedure for adopting zoning.
It's in there.
Under the state regulations, chapter 48 being the zoning enabling act. What it is, is if the planning board does not render a favorable opinion, we are precluded by law from bringing this to town meeting for another two, another two years. And so to go to the other speaker's question earlier this evening, the reason for my recommendation that the board vote favorably. I have stated prior to, I think, that I think it is our office's responsibility to put forward to town meeting members a viable option for compliance if they so choose. And so to preclude us from bringing this back in the fall, I think would inhibit our ability to provide a compliant model for town meeting prior to the expiration of the deadline. And I think it's our responsibility of our department, which I think we've done through the development of this zoning, to provide that to town meeting prior to the end, expiration of that deadline.
Okay.
So just clarify, so when you approve this?
I don't know. I don't approve this.
Well, he's recommending, if you approve it. If you approve it.
If, if it's approved.
If it, if it, if it's approved.
It lives another day to go to fall town meeting.
Excuse me?
It lives another day to go to fall town meeting.
And will it come before you again if it's altered?
And you're going to have a chance to talk again. I promise.
And what makes that happen? Once it, once it ends at town meeting?
We, we generate another public hearing about a zoning amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. One more. Because we have other zoning articles. Are you guys passionate about brew pubs? You might need one.
So it's my understanding that Charlie Baker and Karen Polito created this mess. And since you're married to Karen Polito, isn't this a conflict of interest for you?
I suppose it could be perceived as such, but I don't see it.
I mean, you've got to live with her. And so I know you're getting pressured to, to doing this, so.
Yeah. I don't think it is, but that's okay.
They created this mess for us.
And the legislature blessed it.
Yeah. And our state rep blessed it as well too. So I just wanted to make that.
Well, thank you. Enjoy your evening. Sure, Lorraine.
Really quick. I agree with everybody. Well, let me introduce myself. Lorraine Cambria. I live on Walnut Street. So this really impacts me and several other people that live on the street. So I vehemently are imposed, opposed to this. I listened to the finance meeting and I listened to one of the finance members say, we should just do this and worry about it later. So let's just rush it all through. We realized at the finance meeting that we didn't have enough information that we were going to throw out at town meeting based upon what you put. Based upon what you put up there a little while ago, basically, we don't have traffic studies and other studies. So why would we vote on something when we don't have all the facts in front of us? So I'm glad that you're gonna, or I hope, we postpone this to, you know, the next meeting in the fall. But my biggest question is the traffic impact. There's been no study that I'm aware of that in any of these meetings that you've talked about that talks about parking or traffic. So, if we're gonna have fifteen hundred.
Those studies would be required at the time that a project is proposed and we have specific traffic counts. And parking related to unit counts that we would be able to evaluate. There's no current project proposed, so to try and, we've done a general analysis with what we can, with the information that we have, of what we reasonably can anticipate. But we would require all of those studies, again, in much more detail when a specific project is proposed.
Right, but you're all proposing that we, Mo, wherever Mo is, Mo is proposing we just do this. Oh, because the consequences will be detrimental on the other end. Well, if you're not looking at all the impacts before you make the decision, that's putting the cart before the horse. Then I also understand that you're talking about grant money. Well, I could go out and buy a lottery ticket tomorrow and hope that I win, but if I don't win, I'm not gonna get the money. So that's basically what you're saying with this grant money, which.
I've received a lot more grant money than I have lottery tickets, so.
Well, from what I, from what I understand, the state is in, slowly going into a black hole with the migrant crisis that we have. So I don't know where this grant money is gonna come to, but that's another subject. My biggest concern is this. If we have fifteen hundred units in this project, and where the commute is gonna go. Each one of these units will probably have two cars. I know the hope is that this will be a commuter group, group of housing, people that will live there and they'll take the T to the bus terminal. Somebody brought this up earlier. Okay, so there's only one train stop in Westboro. Walnut Street is, there's only two ways to get to it. Walnut Street and Otis Street. Are we gonna have any plan to figure out how a commercial bus is gonna go down Walnut Street? And if it does, are they gonna have to widen the road, impact us as ownership of our properties? Or B, divert it all to Otis Street? And then when they're all on Otis Street and the traffic's backed up on Route nine for miles and miles and Route 20 like it is every day? How is this gonna impact everybody in the town? Not just my town, my street or my area at that juncture? And it's, you can't anticipate this commute that, okay, everyone's gonna jump on the T. The T sucks. Nobody takes the T. It's out of money. Nobody wants to go on it. And so everyone's gonna drive. And my other question is, in Westboro, who did the, who's gonna do a traffic study at that parking lot to put the cars to go to Boston on the T? There's only so many parking spots there. The people park on the street right now. There's Mill Pond behind it. To the right, there's a, my understanding, the person that owns that land wants to build housing there. On the opposite side is a tire company, unless they sell it and give you more parking. And then across the street is an industrial park. Where are the fifteen hundred people going to park? Or take a bus? Are we just gonna have like a commuter thing that goes from that project down Otis Street every five minutes? This is what needs to be looked at from a, from a perspective, you know, from the town perspective, the impact on schools, busing, buses, not just commuter buses, but school buses. The police, the fire, our taxes and everything else. All of this should be looked at before we pass it and say, oh, let's just do it. And then not only that, I think we should be fighting it. We should be fighting it like some other communities are fighting it. Not just give up and say, oh, well, this is the hand or the duck that we've been given and we'll just move on. No, because you guys probably don't live where we live on, near Walnut Street. You live on the other side of town, on South Quinsig. I don't know where any of you live.
I got all the CSX traffic with every truck they ever told me they were gonna go down.
Whatever. You don't live there.
South Quinsigman Avenue.
It takes me, and then I, from what I understand, they wanna put rotaries at the end of Walnut Street. You can't go from South Street to, to Market Basket at three o'clock in the afternoon. It takes twenty to twenty-five minutes to go up Route 20. How is this possible? And to come east at seven, six o'clock, seven o'clock in the morning, you can't get out of Walnut Street. Nobody lets you out. And so maybe we'll put another traffic light. So that'll impact that. It'll be backed up for miles. It's crazy. And that's, that's just my two cents. And I think we should be holding off, getting our facts in order and then moving forward. That's just my.
I hope you guys are all on the ballot for town meeting.
No, I gotta, I gotta cut. You're gonna have, you're gonna have plenty of time and, you're gonna have plenty of time in August, September. I promise you.
It's a technical question. It's a quick question. It's just a question. It really is.
As long as he's the last one.
No, I just have a, I just have a clarification on site plan review. Like, just to, because I listened to the MHP podcast, or not podcast, it was webinar on site plan review. And it's understanding on, like, for infrastructures, we talked about the sewer and everything. And what they, they brought up a situation where they said, okay, if a developer comes and they want to do a, a project, right? And it's gonna stress, let's say, it still meets the criteria, but say it consumes the remaining balance of our sewer, the balance of our water, but it's still within, let's say, bounds. That under three A, and this was the, one of the consultants, Barrett, Judy Barrett, I think, and then there was a lawyer on there and they said, can we, are you allowed to deny that? And they said, no, not under three A. That you're not allowed to deny that. So, I know you mentioned the special permit piece, but it seemed like that with only site plan review, that there was a lot more, less ability for the town to really deny projects. So that was kinda like just my question under.
Whether something's appropriately zoned or whether something has adequate water pressure or sewer capacity are two separate, three separate matters. Whether that requires upgrades to build it, that's a, that's a separate issue.
But even if it doesn't, like, say if, say it doesn't require, it can be built as is, but you don't have anything left to build anything else.
Then I would say that the developers gotta pay for those upgrades. So, all right.
Okay.
Can we move on? Can we move on? I promise you'll all get an opportunity to.
And.
That's it.
And again, our, I just wanna say that the planning department is consistently engaged and it doesn't need to be at these public forums. Feel free to contact us.
No, we appreciate you all being here. We really do. And we know you have a hard job. I would not wanna be in your position. So all I wanted to say was, you've said, you don't like this. The prior gentleman, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, said, gave a great suggestion, band together with other towns to fight it. There is power in numbers. We are telling you, we don't like it. This group here is causing you to understand we don't like it. We are making it uncomfortable. We are asking you to stand up and fight it. Let the state know there is power in numbers, just like we're causing you discomfort. If you band together with others, compliance is defeat of the town's autonomy and self-determination. You can make a difference to help our town and other towns. We're just asking you to stand up and fight.
Okay. That being the last comment, I would entertain a motion to close Article forty-four, various sections, the MBTA zoning.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Julie has made the motion. I have a second. Second. Dino has seconded. Matt, you in favor of closing the hearing?
I am, yes.
Dino?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mr. DePaolo?
Yes.
And I am in favor as well. Thank you. Next, I guess I would entertain a motion to recommend this article to town meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Matt, you in favor of moving this article, recommending this article to town meeting?
Yes.
Dino?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mr. DePaolo?
Yes.
And I am as well. So, it's gonna get recommended. You've seen how it's gonna play out and you're gonna have an opportunity to come in front of us again and voice your concerns.
Mr. Rodelakis?
Yes.
I just say one thing. The reason that we're being asked to vote to recommend this is to give the town the option to go back to town, town meeting in less than two years. But, the reason that we're asking, the selectmen, I believe, are asking to defeat this at town meeting is because they want the time to allow the planning department to submit our proposed zoning to whichever agency it is in Boston, to have them review it and give us an opinion on it before town meeting. And the reason they did that is because a lot of people were questioning why it wasn't done and felt that we were missing part of the process. So, selectmen want to have the opportunity to have this thing go through the review process. And then, look at it and see if they wanna bring it back in October. Our vote is just procedural, keep those options open, but because the selectmen wanna do what they were being asked to do. Is to have this thing studied by the agency in Boston.
And if it gets voted down at town meeting in October, so be it.
Right.
I've stood with enough people over the course of my life.
Try it again.
Thanks. Okay. Next article, Article forty-five, excuse me. Section seven W. This is new. New senior housing bylaw.
So, Article forty-five for the senior housing overlay, we're proposing to update our existing senior housing regulations, creating a new overlay zoning district that'll support development of over fifty-five senior housing communities on residential lots greater than five acres, residential lots of five acres or greater. Proposal would organize the existing provisions into a single, more comprehensive section rather than how it's currently scattered throughout the bylaw.
Scattered throughout the bylaw and used tape.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. I assume everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at that bylaw? Okay. Do any members of the board have any comments? Matt, any comments?
Nope.
Dino, any comments? Julie, any comments?
No.
Mr. DePaolo, any comments?
Yeah, I have one quick one. I, I think, I obviously thought this was a good idea because I think it helps the planning board give some clarity and give some, can't think of the right word, but equity in the, in the, in the hearing process, that everybody knows what the rules are going in. And the board's not put in a position to have to keep making judgments of waivers on things that maybe we wouldn't wanna give waivers on, but that's the way the law was written. So, I think it encourages fifty-five and overs. And it just gives the standard so people know what, what the criteria are going in to do a development.
Okay. And again, I think that it's a good idea to consolidate this, so again, there is more clarity for people who are looking to propose one of these developments, which by and large, I think are meritorious. So, with, any members of the public have any questions about the senior housing bylaw? No questions, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the senior housing bylaw.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Leventis has seconded. Now I guess I would poll the board. Matt, are you in favor of this, closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Can I make a fifteen minute presentation?
Get outta here with that noise.
Yes.
And I am as well. Now I guess I would entertain a motion to, as to whether to recommend this article to town meeting. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
Okay, Julie has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dino has seconded. Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well, so that article is recommended to town meeting. The next is Article forty-six, Section two, definition of brew pubs. Has everybody had an opportunity to review that section?
Yes.
Do any members of the board have any comments on that section? Matt?
Nope.
Dino?
Nope.
Julie?
No.
Mo?
No.
And I don't either.
Mr. Chair, in the interest of time, we would like to bundle these. I know we've been going one by one, but we, these are really all part and parcel with forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine.
Can I do that? I don't think I can.
Okay.
Yeah, you can.
I think you should.
I know I should, I don't think I can.
Trying to speed things up.
I don't think I can, unfortunately.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on this particular article.
You did, didn't you?
No.
No, not yet.
Second.
All in favor? Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor? Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well. Now I would entertain a motion to, as to whether we recommend this article to town meeting.
I will make that motion.
Okay, Julie has made the motion.
Second.
Dino has seconded. Matt, you in favor of this motion?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well, so this article is recommended to town meeting. Now Article forty-seven, Section seven, capital M, breweries and brew pubs in the Lakeway Overlay, Overlay District. Do any board members have any comments on this motion, on this article?
No.
I don't. Mo, do you?
Uh, no.
Any members of the public have any comments on this article? None, then I want to entertain a motion to close the public hearing on breweries and brew pubs in the Overlay, Lakeway Overlay District. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Julie has made the motion. Dino has seconded. Okay, Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well. I gotta recommend it, right?
Yes.
Now I'm losing track. Now I would entertain a motion, unfortunately, I'm pretty certain I have to do these individually. I would entertain a motion to recommend the Article forty-seven, Section seven, M, breweries and brew pubs in Lakeway Overlay District.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Matt, you in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
I'm in favor as well, so that article is recommended to town meeting. The next is Article forty-eight, Section seven, capital N, breweries and brew pubs in the Route twenty Overlay District. Do any board members have any comments relative to that warrant article?
No.
Nope.
The hearing, none. Members of the public, any comments? I see shaking heads, none. So I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on Article forty-eight.
I'll make that motion.
Julie has made the motion. Dino has seconded. Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well. So that, the public hearing is closed. Now I would entertain a motion as to whether to recommend Article forty-eight to town meeting.
I, I will make that motion.
Julie has made the motion.
Second.
Dino has seconded. Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
I'm in favor as well, so that motion has been recommended to town meeting. Next is Article forty-nine, Section seven, capital O, breweries and brew pubs, Edgemere Overlay District. Any board members have any comments relative to that warrant? Any board members have any comments relative to that warrant article?
Nope.
Seeing none. Any members of the public have any comments? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on Article 49.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
I'm in favor as well, so Article 49, the public hearing is closed, now I would entertain a motion to recommend Article 49 to town meeting.
I will make that motion.
Julie has made the motion.
Second.
Dino has seconded. Matt, you in favor of that motion?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor of recommending that to town meeting?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well, so that, Article 49 has been recommended to town meeting. Now, Article 50, the zoning map, flexible development overlay district expansion.
So, I provided actually an updated map, didn't make it into the slides, so I apologize. But the proposal here is to expand the existing Subdistrict A, which is in the flexible development overlay, over the existing Office Research District. What that will do is that will provide some additional flexibility for uses that are allowed in the Subdistrict A over that Office Research zoning district. There is no change to the existing language proposed, this is a map change only.
Okay. Any board members have any comments relative to the proposed amendment to our zoning map?
No.
Any members of the public have any comments as to the proposed amendment to our zoning map? So, I, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close Article, the, the public hearing on Article 50, the amendment to the zoning map.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Julie has made the motion, Dino has seconded. Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
And Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well. So, now I would make a, entertain a motion to recommend this article to town meeting.
I will make that motion.
Julie has made the motion.
Second.
Dino has seconded. Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
And, Mo, are you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well, so that article's been recommended to town meeting. Article 51, Roman numeral five, capital C, date change, this is the date that we enacted zoning, and it has ramifications primarily as to the determination when lots are grandfathered, these odd lots under 48, Section 6, little paragraph. So, we're changing the date, I think, from June of '64 to May 18th of 1955. Any board member comments or thoughts?
Nope.
It was a good catch.
It was a good catch by Mr. DePaolo. Any, any members of the public have any questions or comments? There being none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the date change, Article 51.
I'll make that motion.
Julie has made the motion.
Second.
Dino has seconded. Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor of closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor of closing the public hearing?
Yes.
And I am as well. Now, I entertain a motion to recommend Article 51 to town meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Julie has made the motion.
Second.
Dino has seconded. Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well. So, that, Article 51 is recommended to town meeting. New business, discuss and vote, vote on bond release for St. John's Pioneer Field parking lot, renovation of 378 Main.
Yep, so the request this evening is for a bond release of the, of $15,233.53 remaining for the parking lot project related to the St. John's Pioneer Field and renovation. So, this is simply for the parking lot, the work there is substantially complete, engineering has suggested that they're okay with the final product, and this is separate from the actual bond that would be for the full renovation of the building as approved by the board. This is for the parking lot only, so.
Any discussions?
Nope.
No?
Anybody in the public have any comments? And I would entertain a motion to vote on the bond release for the Pioneer Field parking lot and renovation of 378 Main Street and release the remaining $15,233.53.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
I'm in favor as well. And we don't have any old business.
Nope.
And I'm noting the correspondence that by and large relates to 142 Clinton Street, which I'm conflicted on and will not comment on, but I'm noting the correspondence. And do we have any other matters?
No, none, no additional matters.
No other matters, so I guess I would entertain a me, a motion that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
I will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Matt, you in favor?
Yes.
Dino, you in favor?
Yes.
Julie, you in favor?
Yes.
Mo, you in favor?
Yes.
And I'm in favor as well.
What days it is?
Thank you and good night.
Good night.